Good evening and welcome to the 561st meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission. If you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on the table at the side of the council chamber, and the chairman reserves the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item. I would like to welcome everyone here this evening, and I would also like to, if he's watching in his first couple days of retirement, I'd like to again congratulate our city administrator, her 43 years of service, our former, our retired, Marty Flemian, who the city recognized last night at a very nice event, and would like to thank Marty for the support that he gave to me and to this commission. And I would like to welcome our new city administrator, I did see him, oh, he is in the back, Mr. Bill Goddard, welcome, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you. With that, I'd like Ms. Quillen, if you would please call the roll.
Councilman Smalls?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Kish?
Here.
Mr. Welford?
Here.
Ms. Bonner?
Here.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Here.
You have a quorum, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Agenda item two, approval of the minutes from the September 11th, 2018 meeting. The minutes were distributed in hard copy to all commissioners. Are there any questions for staff? Hearing and seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the minutes from September 11th meeting as written.
I'll second that.
Ms. Quillen, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
You have a quorum. Oh, I'm sorry, motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item three, variance application number 886-15001 Baltimore Avenue, filed by LTC Corporation, Steve Zavari, for recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Mr. Love?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The applicant LTC Corporation is seeking a variance reapproval to demolish the existing vacant commercial building, construct a multi-tenant, 5,112-square-foot commercial building at 15001 Baltimore Avenue. The property is owned CG Commercial General. A five-foot rear building setback variance is requested to locate the new building five feet from the rear property line. The City of Laurel Unified Land Development Code requires a 10-foot rear setback for commercial buildings in the CG zoning district. The Laurel Mexican Market was the previous tenant of the existing vacant building, which was built in 1964. Surrounding the property to the north is an IHOP restaurant, to the west is Chai Ball Mexican Restaurant, to the east is AMF Laurel Lanes Bowling Alley, and to the south is SAIA Trucking Company. The applicant is proposing to provide 27 standard parking spaces, two ADA parking spaces, and one loading space on the site. The applicant will be required to provide the appropriate number of parking spaces per each use for each commercial storefront, per the City of Laurel Unified Land Development Code, section 20-16.5. The property will have a combination of existing and new landscaping that will cover approximately 23.3% of the property. This will include, among other areas, landscape bump out into the parking lot, a bio-retention area to the rear with shrubs, and planters along the internal sidewalk. Per the City of Laurel Unified Land Development Code, section 20-7.11, a CG zone district requires a minimum green area of 10%. The request was previously approved via variance application number 858 on December 16, 2015, but expired prior to permit submission. It is recommended that the Planning Commission recommend approval of variance number 886 to the City of Laurel Board of Appeals with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall install sprinklers in the proposed building. Number two, the applicant shall obtain a City of Laurel building permit along with all other City of Laurel required permits. Number three, the applicant or tenant must obtain a City of Laurel use and occupancy permit for each use within the proposed building. Number four, the applicant must provide the appropriate number of parking spaces per each use for each commercial storefront, per the City of Laurel Unified Land Development Code, section 20-16.5. Number five, the applicant shall install a five-foot-wide public sidewalk along the north and the east side of the property and tie it into the existing sidewalk on Stagger's Road and on Baltimore Avenue. And six, the applicant shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations for the protection of the use of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? On this sheet, I do not have anyone signed up for this application. Is there anyone wishing to speak? And is the applicant here, should the commission? That's what I thought. You can wait right there unless, are there any questions for the applicant? This is coming back to us. None? If there are no questions, the applicant is here and willing to speak. If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
I would like to move to approve variance application number 886 for 15,001 Baltimore Avenue for recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
I'll second that.
Ms. Quillen, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item four, amended site and landscape plan application and resolution number 18-10- PC 13900-28, 13930-58, 13960-88 Baltimore Avenue, Laurel Lakes Corporate Center Office condominiums, filed by David Bader, DH Bader Management Services Incorporated. This agenda item also includes a public hearing on the application and final action by the Planning Commission. Mr. Burrow?
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow board members. The applicant David Bader and DH Bader Management Service Incorporated is seeking amended site and landscape plan approval to retroactively remove 19 trees along Baltimore Avenue and replace them with new vegetation. The applicant is also seeking approval to remove and replant new vegetation currently found around all three buildings on the corporate center office grounds. The properties are located at 13900-13928, 13930-58, 13960-88 Baltimore Avenue, Laurel Merlin. The three buildings were constructed from 1987 through 1989. The property is owned IRTP Industrial Research Technology Park. Previous actions on the site included, December 4, 1985, site plan approved by the City of Laurel Planning Commission. December 13, 1988, parking modification approved by the City of Laurel Planning Commission. The applicant's reason for removal of the 19 trees is because several of the trees were poor in health with dead and dying limbs, canker, bore, damage, and leaf spot. The applicant also feels the trees block views of the corporate center businesses from passing auto and foot traffic along US Route 1, Baltimore Avenue. The dead branches present a hazard to people and personal property. The applicant would like to prevent any injuries that could be caused by falling branches or limbs. The applicant would also like to use preventable measures to prevent responsibility for any liable injuries. Furthermore, the trees were planted on a sewer line. The corporate center includes three buildings with landscape vegetation that is in a mature state. The vegetation has building windows and entrance. The refresh to the corporate center landscaping around each building, small ornamental trees, shrubs, and perennials will be replaced with planting of a similar character or species currently found on the corporate center office grounds. It is staff recommendation that the City of Laurel Planning Commission, I'm sorry, City of Laurel Planning Commission approve the amended site and landscape plan application for 13900-28, 13930-58, 13960-88 Baltimore Avenue for corporate center office with the following conditions outlined in the technical staff report. One, the applicant should comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulation for the protection of the use of the property. Footnote, Madam Chair, I received a letterhead from one of the business owners that could not make it tonight in support of the landscape changes for this site. Thank you again, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Just, could you clarify, I know the first time I read it, and I think some of the commissioners, but for people that may be watching and listening, we are being asked to retroactively approve something. So, basically, the removal of these trees were done without knowledge that a permit or the approval was necessary?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And therefore, that is what is before us this evening, and moving forward, the landscape plan, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Is the applicant present?
Yes, we have several people signed up for this. Okay. Any questions for staff?
Madam Chair, I do have a question.
Councilman Smalls?
Um, Mr. Burrow, could you tell us, the replacement trees, I presume have already been placed there, new trees? Are they installed, or?
Not at the moment.
Yes, no?
No. They have a landscape plan.
Can you tell me what size those new trees will be? The girth, the circumference of those trees? I didn't read it in the report. If I missed it, please direct me to it. The reason I raise it is because, one, Laurel is a tree city USA and has had the honor of that distinction for many years. So, you know, obviously, we want to see mature trees that are being removed, replaced, not necessarily with mature trees, but comparable trees, one. Two, the other part of this question is warranties regarding the trees. If these trees once planted, if they somehow are damaged or die, what's the replacement of those trees? Maybe the applicant can respond to that. That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, could I, whoever would like to speak for the applicant, if we could have that person to please come up, welcome. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the commission, Kevin Foster with Good Chick Little and Weber, 3909 National Drive in Burtonsville, here tonight representing DH Bader Management Services. Hopefully, I can answer some of your questions. The trees that are going to be replacement trees are Japanese tree lilac. Now, the trees that were inadvertently removed, obviously, the applicant didn't realize that there was an old site plan that was previously approved by the commission, they didn't realize they needed approval and a permit, but the trees were planted, you know, back in 85. So, they were, you know, 12, 18, 24-inch trees that were taken down. So, replanting trees of that current size would be rather difficult. So, we're currently going to be planting trees, you know, two-and-a-half, three-inch caliper, typical landscape-sized trees going in now, that are then, you know, going to be growing into mature trees later. The idea now is to spacing these trees out, we still want to create a really nice streetscape along Route 1 to continue that tree rhythm along Route 1, but we also were cognizant of trying to maintain some visual windows into the buildings for the tenants, so trying to create a balance between that really nice streetscape that was there, recreating that, and also maintaining some visual, you know, access to these buildings.
Can I just, I appreciate your response, Mr. Foster, but I'm going to direct my question back to staff, and that is, we set a minimum caliper for tree replacement. Does anyone know that, that I see? This has been years ago, so I'm just trying to get a sense that saplings aren't going to be put in, you know, small-caliper trees that will easily snap in a wind. I'm just trying to get a sense of the size of the trees that are going to be replaced.
These are usually two-and-a-half to three-inch caliper trees, they're usually 12 to 14 feet tall, they're fairly substantial trees for installation and landscape. They're very typical in the industry, so they easily cannot be confused with saplings. These are very substantial trees.
Thank you.
And just to answer his earlier question, if any of the trees do come down as they're maturing, your plan is to maintain that streetscape and they would go back up?
Yes, they're, I mean, the landscape contractor provides a one-year warranty to the management company for those trees after they're installed.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
I just had one. Are there more trees to be taken down, like at the south end of the building along Laurel Lakes Avenue? I noticed some dead ones in there, a couple of pines and some other that are getting overgrown in that area.
There, as part of the plan, there were trees around the buildings themselves, some overmature trees that are blocking windows, and there was a plan put forward to replace those. Now, if any trees actually die around the perimeter, the applicant would obviously want to take down and replace any dead trees on the property.
Madam Chair, I'm just curious, if there are more to be taken down, will our action tonight be all that's necessary for further work to be done? I mean, there's a couple of large dead trees there now that'll probably be down soon, so would they have to come back and reapply for that?
If we look at the top picture, are you talking about at the west end? I mean, it's, it would be south in terms of Route 1, but I'm saying, in terms of that picture, the orientation of that picture, the farthest to the left?
Yes. That row right there that you see.
And is that your property, and that would be, those would be checked out and make sure that those are safe and?
Yes.
Okay.
But would this application cover that worker, would they have to bring that back to the city?
They would have to come back.
Okay.
If they take it down completely?
Yes, we spoke to the applicant, and they knew of this.
Okay.
We do everything in parts, so they did this the first, and if they go back, they have to come back to you guys again.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, at seven, excuse me, I turned the microphone off. At 7:19, I would like to open the public hearing on this application. I have Mr. Eubank signed up. Did you want to speak, or were you? Okay, thank you. I don't have anyone else that has specifically identified Agenda Item Four. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this application? If you would please come state your name and address for the record?
My name is Brian Coyle, 336 Prince George Street, Laurel. And I would just request that the trees that are replaced be replaced with native species that are adapted to the local climate and weather conditions, I think that would be appropriate, especially it being a, Laurel, being a tree city, I think that would be quite appropriate. And I don't think that a two-and-a-half inch to three-inch diameter tree is comparable to the trees that are there, that, you know, just the math doesn't compute.
No, I will answer, and if the applicant would make sure that I'm representing what you said, I think what he was saying is, they were putting up these, stating they are not mature at this point, that are comparable to this size, but that would mature.
Well, without a picture of what that looks like, there's no way to, I mean, to make an informed decision about that, because we don't know what they look like. You know, there's no picture of what those trees look like as mature trees, so.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Let me ask staff, do we have a tree, native tree requirement, maybe Mr. Smalls knows? I know we did for some plantings around the lake. We used to have a list of stuff that said, this is what you can plant where.
To my knowledge, do we have a native?
Joanne, taking your heat, yes.
Let me get you on the record, Joanne. So, we do?
We do, both Public Works and Parks and Recreation, and we can provide that information to the applicant.
So, as far as the selection of the trees, that would have to be approved by staff that makes sure that it's within this list?
Anything that we plant, that the city plants.
I understand, but there was a thing that said, I remember getting a thing in my mail that said, if you're going to plant something in the right-of-way in your yard, you had to follow a certain, right? Does that apply to these guys? I'm getting to the question of a native species, I think the man makes a good point. He might as well put in.
So, the applicant would have to plant trees that are part of the tree list that the city has, that Public Works and the Department of Parks and Rec does?
That's great.
Usually, they coordinate with staff on the trees that they're planting, and make sure that no damage to the right-oways or the streets will be done.
Okay.
So, if, so to address the previous speaker, if the trees that are proposed are not currently on that list, is the applicant okay to make sure that?
The trees that were proposed are on the approved tree list for the City of Laurel.
Okay, thank you. That's, and we could put in the motion if there's anything. Okay, thank you. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on this application? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:23. And if there are no further questions for staff or the applicant, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the amended site plan and landscape plan application and the resolution number 1810-PC, with the staff report amended and with tonight's testimony included for the Laurel Lakes Corporate Center Office condominiums.
Do I have a second?
I have a second, Madam Chairman.
Ms. Quillen, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Agenda item five. Agenda item five, final site and landscape plan application and resolution number 18-09-PC, Candlewood Suites Hotel, Laurel Lakes Court, Parcel B7, filed by Golden Realty LLC, Ken This agenda item includes a public hearing on the application as well as final action by the Planning Commission. Mr. Grace?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The applicant, Golden Realty, is seeking final site and landscape approval to construct a four-story Candlewood Suites Hotel with 97 rooms and a freestanding concierge on 2.58 acres of undeveloped land on Laurel Lakes Court, Parcel B7. The property is owned IRTP Industrial Research Technology Park, and is surrounded by a public park and community center to the north, residential properties to the west, and Industrial Research Technology Park Zone properties to the east and the south. The site will have a five-foot-high wooden privacy fence surrounding the property, including 105 parking spaces and a trash station enclosure, which will be enclosed on all sides. The trash enclosure will be 37 feet from the property line, which borders the Goody House property. The traffic study performed for the development states, the proposed Candlewood Suites development is not anticipated to add a significant number of additional trips volumes to the existing network. The applicant looks forward to working with the City of Laurel regarding the proposed use and ensure that all rules and regulations are as followed. It is recommended that the City of Laurel Planning Commission approve the final site and landscape plan application for Laurel Lakes Court, Parcel B7, with the following conditions. The applicant, or one, the applicant shall obtain all City of Laurel permits prior to start of construction. Two, if any utility cuts are performed on a city street, the restoration work must follow the city's standards that require the permanent patches in the cut area with a two-foot mill, an overlay curb-to-curb, and a minimum of 25 feet in each direction of the cut. The applicant is responsible for fixing any damage done to the public right-of-way. The applicant must contact the City of Laurel Department of Public Works to schedule an inspection prior to starting any work in the city's right-of-way. If any road closures are performed on a city street, the applicant must consult the City of Laurel Department of Public Works in advance and receive permission. The applicant shall comply with all local, state, and federal laws and regulations for protection of the use of their property. Seven, the applicant shall reconstruct two pedestrian ramps to meet the latest ADA standards. Eight, the applicant shall maintain a landscaping buffer, which includes mature-growth trees between the proposed project and all abutting properties. And nine, the applicant shall pay a fee in lieu to the City of Laurel, a total of $46,174 prior to issuance of a building permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Councilman Smalls?
This is a, hopefully, a quick and easy one. I noticed on the drawing that there is rendering of a lighted pylon. Is there any other signs that will be affixed to the building or anything like that?
You might want to, the person representing the applicant might be best to answer that question.
If you would state your name and address, please.
For the record, my name is Sylvia Silverman, representing the applicant and the engineering company firm of CB Inc., with offices at 1395 Picard Drive in Rockville. I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
I'm interested in knowing if there will be any signs other than the pylon sign that's on the drawing?
No, I believe the pylon sign is the only one that will be there.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. For the applicant or for staff?
Yeah.
Let's, can we, thank you. I was going to say, I'm going to bring the applicant back up.
Okay, I have a staff.
Oh, staff, please.
Talk to me a little bit about, I tried to pull it off the drawing, but the stormwater management, there's a lot of asphalt. So, what's the, what's the plan?
From my understanding, I mean, they, they would have to get approved from the county because it does exceed the 20,000-square-feet development.
Right. So, is that part of the staff report that makes them?
I mean, we wouldn't approve it until they get approval from the county in terms of for the stormwater management.
Please, thank you.
And I have a question. In regards to the Department of Parks and Recreation comments, I saw that there were two comments. One was about the buffer, which was addressed in the staff report. The second comment was about a concern about the placement of the trash dumpster. Was there any resolution to that, or recommendation, or agreement to have that moved?
I mean, I spoke with the applicant, they were, I mean, I guess, fine with the area. You might want to talk, you can probably talk to the applicant, the person representing them. I mean, there is, they know the five-foot fence surrounding the property also with a 37-foot from the property line, as well as it's enclosed.
I think, and I know Parks and Recreation is here, so if you'd like to comment further, please do, but I think what I took from the comment was that the Goody House is, I think, understanding that there would be a buffer, you would still like to see the trash area moved if we could, is that correct?
That is correct. Given that the intention is to use some of the outside natural area that would abut the property, we didn't want to be abutting close to the trash area and would prefer that that be moved to the other side of the building, the other side of the parking lot.
Thank you. So, I would just ask, when the applicant does come up, if, and I'll remind you or ask again, if there's the opportunity to move where the trash is. Are there any, thank you, and thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? If not, before I open the public hearing, I would like to invite Ms. Silverman back up, and welcome. up and welcome. I don't think she needs to state her name and address for the record again. Welcome and.
Yes, regarding, there's a side tight fence, so there would be no visual from the adjacent property. There will be an enclosure around the trash container also. And if we had to move it to the other side, it would be near residences as opposed to an open space that has already mature growth around it.
Okay. If you would just kind of keep looking, or I think what her issue is, is exactly what you're saying about it would be near residences, is that if, if it's not moved, it's going to be near Parks and Rec when they have children out there or educational events, so.
Right. And that's, to that point, it is screened with a side tight fence, and there's no access from that property to here except on the path that's supposed to be left open.
And is there any issue with odors or all traveling? I think, is that, that's more the issue. I think they under, they're happy with the buffer, and I appreciate staff, but I think the issue is, would there, we would not expect any rodent or any of that.
The trash container will be enclosed, and whatever the requirements are usually for the trash containers to be closed so that they're, yeah.
Okay. Okay. You could put it in the motion. Is there anything that you wanted to make as far as a presentation or just to answer questions?
No, just to answer questions, anything you needed to know.
Thank you. So hold on, are there other, hold on just a second. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
No, but maybe for, for staff.
Thank you. And if we have any questions from the public hearing that we aren't able to answer, we may invite you back up. Mr. Welford?
One for staff. On the, it might just be a typo, but on the application, there's, well, on the resolution, there's a ninth condition, and on the application, there's only eight conditions. I think they just left off the ninth condition there, the in lieu of fee.
Yes. Shouldn't be on both of them, so that's probably.
That'll be added on. And what is that in lieu of?
The woodlands, they didn't have. It's for the forest conservation. They were, because they weren't providing the adequate amount, we're charging them the fee in lieu.
That gets to Rick's point then. Stormwater management won't make that. Okay. At 7:33, I would like to open the public hearing on this final site and landscape plan for Candlewood Suites Hotel at Laurel Lakes Court, parcel B7. I do not have anyone else previously signed up for that. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this application? Hearing and seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at 7:34. And if there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the final site and landscape plan application and the resolution number 18-09-PC for Candlewood Suites Hotel, Laurel Lakes Court, parcel B7, filed by Golden Realty LLC. And that would include the nine conditions that were recommended by staff.
I'll second.
Ms. Quillen, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item six, forest, I think that's conservation, isn't it? Conservation application? Does mine says conservation? C A, okay. Forest Conservation Plan Application and Resolution Number 18-08-PC, Candlewood Suites Hotel, Laurel Lakes Court, parcel B7, filed by Goldman Realty LLC, Ken Talati. This agenda item includes a public hearing on the application and final action by the planning commission.
The applicant, Golden Realty, is seeking forest conservation plan approval to construct the Candlewood Suites Hotel on 2.58 acres of undeveloped parcel at Laurel Lakes Court, parcel B7. The site consists of 2.5 acres, and the proposed development on the site will impact 1.87 acres. The site has a shortage of 1.06 acres of woodland, therefore, the applicant is required to pay the fee in lieu of reforestation of the amount of $46,164. It is recommended that the City of Laurel Planning Commission approve the forest conservation plan application for Laurel Lakes Court, parcel B7, with the following condition. The applicant shall pay a fee in lieu to the City of Laurel, a total of $46,174 prior to issuance of a building permit. Thank you again.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Thank you. Is there any presentation regarding this or just response to questions? Any questions for the applicant? Okay. I will open the public hearing at 7:36. I do not have anyone currently signed up. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this application? Hearing and seeing no one, we will close the public hearing at 7:36. If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to.
Mr. Kish?
Mr. Wilson?
Go ahead, Mr. Kish.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
All right. Let's, I'll move to approve the forest conservation plan. We're engineers, not English majors here. We got a little typo, but forest conservation plan application and resolution, including the resolution 18-08-PC for the Candlewood Suites Hotel, Laurel Lakes Court, parcel B7.
Second. Quillen, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And thank you. Do I have more signups? Okay. Give us a minute to organize our paper. Okay. Agenda items seven, eight, and nine are all related to Greenview Drive filed by CS Patuxent Green LLC. We have quite a few signups. This is not, as you all know, new to us as the commission. There was a lot of, there has been a lot of discussion. What I would like to say for this evening is, we have, I have asked, as the chairperson, that the agenda items be taken in order and specific to those agenda items. So some people may be speaking three times if you've signed up, but what I would like to ask is that after we listen to the staff report, and as I've done with all, listen to the applicant, and I will, and I believe the applicant has already, already knows this, but I will ask that we speak specifically to the agenda item on the preliminary subdivision plan, the first one, and then we will move through as approvals or how this goes.
Okay.
So Ms. Polley, so, I'm sorry, let me state for the record. Agenda item seven, preliminary subdivision plan application and resolution number 18-05-PC 14415, Greenview Drive, filed by CS Patuxent Greens LLC. Public hearing on the application and final action by the planning commission. This agenda item was discussed and tabled at the last meeting. Additional materials were provided to the, to the staff and available for public viewing and provided to us as commissioners. So Ms. Polley?
Good evening, Madam Chair, planning commission members. The applicant is seeking approvals for multiple zoning application for property known as 14415 Greenview Drive to redevelop the Patuxent Greens Golf Course into a residential community. The preliminary subdivision application was tabled at the September hearing due to concerns regarding access in and out of the community as well as the proposed density for the project. Since the hearing, the applicant has provided updated plans, traffic incident exhibits, as well as a single access point memo that illustrates possible traffic incidents that could possibly occur. City staff, including the Fire Marshal, Chief of Police, and the Department of Public Works, has reviewed the updated information and the proposed design techniques are sufficient for the development and have no other concerns about access for the site. The subject property was part of the first 1981 annexation for the City of Laurel. The site was placed in a planned unit development existing zone. At the time of annexation, an approved preliminary plan to have dwelling units, office, retail, and a recreational facility was approved. The property is located in neighborhood 10 of the city's master plan, of the city's master plan. Surrounding the property are city recreational facilities that include the Greenview Drive Pool Complex, Cabana, and Park. Directly between the city's pool facility and clubhouse is a golf course and a two-story building across from the Greenview Drive entrance, which is five stories in height. Patuxent Green Development, which has 132 dwelling units, Greens of Patuxent, which has 156 units, Spring House Apartments, which consists of 220 dwelling units sits northwest to the subject property. Our residential sites just mentioned total 508 units and were constructed in the mid to late 80s. No new residential construction has occurred since then. In order to change the use within the PUD zone and redevelop a property, MAP Amendment approval is required. Furthermore, a determination from the planning commission is required to determine if the proposed new use is of substantial departure from the original use approved. On December 11, 2017, the applicant received a determination from the planning commission that the proposed redevelopment of the golf course was of substantial departure from the original approved plan. MAP Amendment approval was granted from the Mayor's City Council on January 22, 2018. The approval allowed for development of up to 450 dwelling units. MAP Amendment approval allowed the applicant to submit other required zoning approval applications for redevelopment of the site. The applicant had an environmental review of the site conducted in 2017 by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. The agency had no concerns or recommendations of the proposed project. Since MAP improvement, MAP, excuse me, MAP Amendment approval, the applicant has obtained an approved JD and verification of the delineations of water from the Army Corps of Engineers that approved. That approval was also submitted to the Maryland Department of Environmental for their records. The applicant also obtained water and sewer category change from Prince George's County to place the property within water and sewer category four. The applicant also received grading, erosion, and sediment control plan approval from Prince George's Soil Conservation District. They also received hydraulic planning analysis approval for the site from WSSC and are moving forward with their final water and sewer engineer for the site. The applicant also obtained a conditional letter of MAP revision, CLOMAR, from Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA. The applicant received concurrence letters from Inaruno County and an email from Prince George's County regarding the proposed project and the proposed floodplain fill will have no adverse impact to the upstream and downstream properties adjacent to the proposed development. Thus, no objection to the proposed fill in the floodplain. The applicant has also submitted a concept stormwater and management plan application with Prince George's County D-PY to address the stormwater management issues for the property, as well as the appropriate permits to the Maryland Department of Environmental. The approvals from FEMA and MDE will allow the applicant to mitigate the flooding issues that currently exist for the area as well as develop the property outside of the floodplain. The applicant will still be required to obtain additional FEMA approvals per phase. The golf course is slated to close at the end of December. Moreover, the applicant and his development team has held community meetings for the residents of the existing Patuxent communities to give an update presentation of the proposed project over the summer and has met with city staff numerous times. Notifications regarding the proposed zoning application for the proposed development were sent to contiguous property owners on September 28, 2018, to advertise tonight's hearing. There hasn't been any inquiries regarding the proposed development since the new hearing notice was sent out. As for the preliminary plan, as stated earlier, the applicant is proposing to redevelop the Patuxent Greens Golf Course located at 14415 Greenview Drive, Laurel, Maryland 20708. The proposed, excuse me, the proposed project is to subdivide land into 389 residential lots for 222 townhouses and 167 single-family homes. The proposal also includes a new clubhouse that will not operate as a banquet facility as the golf course clubhouse currently does, outdoor terrace, pool, playground amenities, a comprehensive trail and sidewalk system, utilities, and open space parcels throughout the proposed community. The community will have a total 100, excuse me, 1,470 parking spaces, including a reconfigured parking lot for the office building, Greenview Drive Cabana, and Pool Complex. The community will have both public and private streets and an established HOA once completed. The primary spine road for the proposed community will extend from the Greenview Drive entrance and connect the various housing landbays. Sidewalks and crosswalks will provide pedestrians safe access to, from, and throughout the site. The applicant proposes some onsite and offsite operational improvements for the project, which would include modifying the existing southbound MD Route 197 left turn signal from what is called a exclusive permissive five-second, excuse me, five-section signal head to a dedicated left turn on green arrow only, and installing a mini roundabout at the intersection of Clubhouse Boulevard entrance to Patuxent Greens and Greenview Drive with the appropriate pedestrian crosswalks installed as well. The proposed residential density for the project is 2.03 dwelling units per acre for the 192-acre site. The code allows townhouse zones to have a density of up to 10 dwelling units per acre in R55 Zone, which is our most popular single-family dwelling unit zone for a density of 5.7 dwelling units per acre. The applicant has submitted revised responses that the proposed subdivision provides sufficient public facilities and service to the area as required per the code, section 20.29.7. The project will be constructed in four phases with an estimated five-year build-out timeframe. Staff recommends that the City of Laurel Planning Commission approve the preliminary subdivision plan for the proposed residential community of the redevelopment of the Patuxent Greens Golf Course with the conditions outlined within the technical staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Nope. I would like to invite the applicant. Representative Mr. Ship, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission for the record, my name's William Ship. I'm with the law firm of O'Malley, Miles, Island, and Gilmore located in Calverton, just down the street. Happy to be here tonight on behalf of the applicant and pleased to be back before you to examine some of the questions that came up at the first hearing on September 11. For a couple of house cleaning items, Madam Chair, we had a master presentation that was asked that we break it into two. I would just ask that the master be included in both records, if that's acceptable?
That's acceptable. Thank you.
And then I also want to say that I always like to thank staff for all the hard work that they've done. Christian and all the city staff has been very helpful to us trying to sort through issues, not just recently, but all through the process, protecting the city and asking for information. I do want to say that we are in complete agreement with the staff report and the proposed conditions, even the additional condition that was added since the September 11 hearing. So we really have no deviation with staff from their report. We do have a slideshow that represents issues related to the preliminary plan that we want to run through. I would propose that we will stick to the main issues of the access question and the density question. I assume that we did the presentation on the rest of the preliminary plan. We will, we have some slides on that, but we'll go through those quickly. And I would ask, of course, if you have any questions on other matters, you just let us know. I do want to say at the outset, that's the preliminary plan, technical plan you have in your file, and then the aerial that shows the location of the property. I did provide, Christian, and I think she has provided you with a copy, I don't have a slide of this, but a sheet, which I have some copies for folks in the audience if they would like, pass it around. So, talking about access, one of the questions that came up was, could we look for some way to get into this property from another direction? And the only really logical way would be to the north through that area that is our 55 acres of wooded land. To the south is really part of the Patuxent Park and is not approachable and doesn't really connect to anything. To the north, there's a couple of options conceivably. One is that you extend a road from the condo, there's a public street through the condo, I think it's called Parkview Drive, that you could see logically, maybe it could extend to the Home Depot property to the north. The other possible suggestion, I think last time, was that through the wooded area, I think there's some ball fields that the city has, maybe there'd be a way to connect up there. And so what this sheet is. And so what this sheet is called environmental constraints, and I asked that it be included in the record as well, is showing you is that all of that acreage, including our 55 acres of forested area, is wetlands. And therefore, getting through that land to extend a road up to 198 is environmentally just a non-starter. And if you look closely at that map, you'll see a bunch of blue lines. It's not only wetlands, those are actual streams. And of course, the main one being Bear Branch, which we would propose is not a stream that wants to be crossed multiple times. The other location, even up towards the Home Depot, there's a couple of issues with that. One is you again impact the wetlands to get across there. You have to do a crossing over Bear Branch. We do not think that environmentally that would be approved. It'd be a very expensive road. The initial spine might be a city road, and then our connection would come up through, you see the little blue piece at the bottom of the page on the left-hand corner. That also is a wetland area, which we are preserving as a water-featured pond on our site, wouldn't need to be destroyed. The other practical problem is that, from an environmental standpoint, the crossing there at Bear Branch is very close to a crossing that 197 does over Bear Branch. And my understanding from my engineers is that MDE does not like crossings that impacts on streams very close to each other, particularly if there's not an overriding public purpose to warrant that. And we don't believe this would meet that standard. And the final reason it's improbable to make that connection is that that public street would be connecting to a private parking lot. And that's not necessarily the way we normally extend public streets. So I wanted to show you this. I know we've said it a couple of times, but I wanted to show you that we did look at it. And that's where we came up. So, given that constraint, we said now we have to look very closely at the access issues with what we have to address some of the concerns that came up, to show you that we've looked at ways that if there are incidents in any number of places throughout the site, that we can show you how circulation can continue through the project. And I'm going to ask our traffic consultant, Wes Guckert, to come up, and he's going to run through some slides on that. He also has the slides regarding the offsite improvements, which we're going to go through very quickly because we know we've already talked about those before. And then I'll come back up.
Thank you. For the record, Wes Guckert with the Traffic Group. We are the traffic and transportation planner on this project and want to go through, and we'll go through as quickly as you, as I can, and then come back and answer any questions that you might have. So, the first thing we did was to go through and examine for you and show you a number of other projects in the area or beyond that have a single point of access, much like we're proposing. Russell Green, not too far from here, 567 units on a single point of access. Greenbelt Station, down off of Greenbelt Road, south of the Greenbelt Metro Station, 800 units on a single point of access. Sunset Islands and Ocean City, it too, 528 units, single point of access. Victoria Falls, off of Conti Road, 650 units, a single point of access. Kings Grant, off of Brown Station Road down there, Upper Marlboro, 357 units. Cameron Grove, Maryland 214, the east of, in the east of 202, in the Largo-Lotsford area, single point of access, 740 units. So, there are, this is not what we're doing is out of the ordinary. It's something that is done not only in Prince George's County and beyond, but it's done very carefully considering how things are best done as it relates to fire and access. Let me take you through where we were originally. We had a original access with a divided roadway going in about halfway back to the main circulation area of the project. And there was a parking lot as well that, so that the driveway, the divided highway stopped at this point here. And the parking lot access was offset from one of the main drive-alts. What we did-
Wes, can I interrupt you? Can we just make sure that, can we make clarification that when he's that way, are they capturing him on the microphone enough? Yes, he's okay?
Yeah, every now and then, my voice is loud enough, but if it isn't-
No, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure-
Sure, I understand.
Everybody's got for the record.
I got it. So, what we've done to modify and to make it better is that there has been changes made to the main access that extends the median, the divided median, all the way back to the main, one of the main drive-alts, main streets. And the parking lot has been modified as well. And that's, you'll see in just a moment, how important that both of those changes are. Because what we've been able to do is to keep a divided roadway all the way back that's 18 to 20 feet wide, that will allow for any cars or disruption that may exist on one side or the other, first to be bypassed as you're going into or out of the community. And this particular exhibit details the inbound and outbound movements. And as you can see by the arrows, that there's complete circulation entirely through the site. And there's multiple ways to get in and out. And what we've done for you is to show what happens if there's an incident right at the beginning of the entrance to the property. And what we've done is said, okay, the incident occurs on the inbound side. What happens, what happens then if that's all blocked up? Well, what we've been able to do is to show you that there are ways to get in and out if the incident is on the inbound side. The outbound side remains clear. There's access through the parking lot, and of course, all the way around with a double median going into the property. If, if there happens to be an incident just inside at the end of where the divided highway begins here, we've been able to design the parking lot so that cars can get in and still get in and out of the property without, without creating an issue, without creating a safety issue for residents or for emergency vehicles that are trying to circulate through the property. If we go a little further into the property, beyond the main entrance, we've designed the driveway for the other parking lot on the north side of the property so that if the first several homes, for as an example, are blocked up from a traffic incident or an EMS situation, this parking lot creates a bypass around that particular incident. Same thing, this parking lot also. And you'll see that because this roadway goes all the way around the property, you're able to get in and out safely. EMS is able to do their job without creating any further issues. We then looked at a location number four and said, okay, if just inside, what happens? Well, that means the folks that are located on the south side of the property circulate around and come back out the main entrance. Again, looking inside the property a little bit further, what happens? Well, you can see that there are other ways to get around the property, to get out of the property. And we believe that even with the discussion that had occurred previously, that because we've moved the parking lot driveway on the north side, realigned that, and because we've extended the median all the way into the property, that we've created an opportunity that for EMS, fire, rescue, police, whatever it happens to might be, an emergency situation, that it would not create an undue hardship or a safety issue or congestion issue for the residents. As you know, we've, at the request of the staff, we added a couple of other intersections and made modifications. We're making modifications to several intersections that the developer is willing to make at the intersections. The main thrust of the earlier conversations was the intersection of 197 and Clubhouse Boulevard at Bowie Road. And the State Highway Administration wants to see that change made. There were, there were issues as it relates to safety because there's a sight distance issue that exists. If you're, if you're at the left turn lane and there's another car in the opposing left turn lane, northbound, it blocks the sight line to vehicles that are northbound on 197. We're going to rectify that by changing the signal phasing and modifying the intersection itself so that it becomes, instead of a permissive left turn, you're only going to be able to turn left on a dedicated green arrow. So that, that quite frankly, is, is an enormous safety issue, enormous safety issue for the, for the motoring public. And Alan keeps telling me we got slides on this, so I'm going to show you some slides on this. The existing, what we were talking about is that if you've got, if you're waiting to make a left today, a single car, quite frankly, blocks the sight distance of the oncoming vehicles. And that's, that's a situation, I got to cover it. This, that's a situation where, that we're going to alleviate today. And that really came about as a result of community input, where we went back to government and decided that it was in everyone's best interest to have that change made. Anything else, Alan? So, this, this came about as a result of, of community issues as well. And that's a mini-circle at the main entrance to the, to the community. And the mini-circle is important for a couple of reasons. Number one, the, there was, there was community concern about how that intersection would operate. I'm not a fan of four-way stops. They really create a little bit more problem to me than what they're worth. A two-way stop would typically be where the stops would occur on, on the side streets and Clubhouse and the community would have the free flow. If you have a four-way stop, normal rules of the road would be that if two cars approach the intersection at the same time, the car on the right has the right of way. So again, the community would suffer. Under this mini-circle situation, what happens is that once you enter the circle, that is the, the single-family communities to the south, they would have the right of way over anyone leaving the community of the subject property. So that- So, this, so, so what we've done in addition to making it better, quite frankly, for, for the community and safer, we've added, added crosswalks. We've added pedestrian refuge areas within the intersection itself so that if pedestrians are not able to get all the way across, they've got a refuge area. And those are shown in the blue, in the blue circle. What we've done here is to create, again, I think you've seen it before, but we've created a simulation. I want to, I want to ensure you, this is not an animation. This is a, this is a technical simulation showing how traffic would operate. Now, we're not going to show you a full hour, obviously, but this is traffic during the morning peak hour with the site traffic involved. And, and it is, we're dealing with level of service via as in Bowie conditions at this intersection, even with the, the site traffic. And it's important to see that we're not going to be dealing with monstrous amounts of traffic that's backed up on Clubhouse Boulevard. We're trying to get through the main entrance at, at Clubhouse and Greenview and the site entrance. The, the mini-circle will function as it's intended to function. It will allow vehicles that are, that are leaving the community to go up to Greenview to continue north on 197. It will also allow cars, as you can see, to continue west on Clubhouse Boulevard to 197 as well. And so this is an, an actual simulation at a, at a point in time during the morning peak hour when traffic would be moving into and, and out of the community. We did the same thing during the morning, excuse me, during the, during the evening peak hour with this traffic from the site, showing the, the evening peak hour with the proposed development traffic superimposed on top of the evening peak hour. We added growth at about 1.5% per year for three years. We did our original traffic counts back in September 2017. So we've added growth. We've added traffic from the proposed WA-WA 197 and 198. We added growth from other development that has been approved out of our period as well, plus the full build-out of our project. And I want to mention that, that our traffic study was originally based upon 450 units. We're now down to about 389, 390 units. So, we've got about a 20% increase in traffic is what we're showing with these simulations. And again, these are simulations, not animations. This isn't Disney stuff. This is taking the traffic analysis that we've done and converting it into actual moving cars. So, that completes, as quickly as I could, the, the, the traffic point. And unless Bill or Alan thinks I've missed something, I'll come back.
Thank you, Wes. Bill?
Thank you, Wes. And of course, if there's any questions, we can always bring Wes back up or any of our experts. What we're going to do now is show you a quick experience through the project. And our architectural designer is here to show you and narrate that for you. Colleen Ayala is going to come up and guide us through that.
Good evening, Madam Chair. As Bill mentioned, my name is Colleen Hernandez Ayala. I am a partner with GTM Architects in Bethesda. And what I'm going to do is really present what we call the experience. And what we want to do is really bring to life the development and visually address some of the concerns that have been noted here about site access and circulation through the development. And before I start the video, I just want to point out that it is very conceptual in nature and that it is meant to represent the idea of what the massing of the architecture and character of the development will be. So we've started with an aerial view right at the intersection of Greenview and Clubhouse Boulevard. You can see the existing office building over on the right there as we come in to the development. One of the things I want to point out is the landscaping and street trees that will line the entrance. There is a center strip as well with landscaping and our clubhouse over to the right. You're going to see some points where we go slow and we go fast, really to kind of move you through the experience. But as you move through the development, you're seeing really how vehicles will experience, as well as pedestrians. And now we're moving through some of the single-family areas, really highlighting how we've tried to build on the existing natural resources of the site and enhance some of the existing features. We've created a very extensive network of trails and sidewalks to really visually and physically benefit from the natural resources that are present on the site. And now as we move down, we're moving back down to the pedestrian level. You can see some cars moving through the development and the neighborhood. This is meant to be a very pedestrian-active site, walkable neighborhood. We're getting ready to turn the corner here. We're getting ready to turn the corner here. It's going to speed up a little bit, so bear with us. And again, we can see the pedestrian nature here. Green areas in front of single-family homes. We can see the pedestrian movement, the vehicular movement. And as we move on to the neo-traditional townhomes here, we're going to come above and move toward the main road that will connect you back to Clubhouse Boulevard. The white structures in the rear are really the adjacent neighborhoods that are next to the site. And then we're looking at the large pond that is currently located on the golf course. We see that as the heart of our community, preservation of a natural resource that is existing there. And then you're looking over to the left at our community clubhouse. We have a multi-generational park that will be there. And as we turn and come back to the beginning, you really can look at that feature that we see as the heart of our community and then back out towards Clubhouse Boulevard.
Okay, I promise we're getting towards the end of this presentation. So now we want to go from there to talk about the density question. We've talked about the access. I wanted to show you some comparisons of the density. This, of course, is the approved PUD plan that had the different pods of sections of development. I want to point out on this one that initially we had shown some townhouse potential along the single-family neighborhood. We have pulled that away, so it's only singles against the singles. And in fact, it's singles detached homes against the multifamily condos up to the north as well. So when you look at the density analysis for our property, based upon the gross acreage, we're at about 2.03 dwelling units per acre based upon our 389 units. That compares to 3.83 for the adjoining residential detached and of course, 13.0, which is the condo development, which of course is a more dense product. But then, you know, it's been suggested that even though we're retaining the 55 acres, it's really a conservation area. So if we net that out, what does that do to the density? So the next slide shows you, if we take the 55 acres out and you take out the piece that was dedicated from the adjoining single-family neighborhood to the city's park, you come up with a comparison density of 2.84 dwelling units per acre, 4.0 on the edge, and 13 again up on top. Our density is much lower than what's allowed under the PUD and our lot sizes are consistent with what is allowed in the PUD. So I think really our density is consistent, certainly with what was approved up to 450 units. You heard we're at 389. We already reduced the number as we laid out the development pods. And we're consistent with a reasonable size for this property, which has a large amount of open space, which you'll hear about when we get to the detailed site plans. I don't want to go off message too much. We do really think that by clustering our units, we've been able to preserve some large areas of green space. Like I said, we did some things to match single-family to single-family and we're trying to be consistent and compatible with the surrounding density. This is just a summary of what I just told you written there. I won't go through it again. We do not have any of the smallest lots allowable in the PUD, the 4,000-square-foot lots. And then the list of approvals, which I think Christian went through most of them, so I'm not going to go through those. We also have a detailed memorandum that was submitted on the record with the APF analysis that is required by your code where we analyze each of those things. And what we spent time on tonight focusing is on traffic and access and density. So those are all components of that memo and we wanted to spend some time because obviously those were the issues we were asked to respond to. And then, of course, with the subdivision, there are a number of impact fees, school fees, public safety fees, and then a couple of city fees that are also included in the subdivision recommendation, which we are in full agreement with. It's over $10 million of fees generated by this project. So that wraps up the presentation in terms of the slides on the preliminary plan. Again, I did not touch on every single element of the preliminary plan, but we have met, in our opinion, in our proffer, the APF requirements, public facilities requirements. We're in agreement with your staff recommendations on conditions regarding that. We spent a lot of time looking at the access issue because we knew it was important. And we submitted a memorandum to your city staff, which was reviewed by your public works, your fire marshal, and your police chief and found to be adequate in terms of efficiency and safety. We all know that, all things being equal, you would like to see an alternative access point. But I think we showed what our constraints were there and that we spent a lot of effort making sure that we made some tweaks to the plan so that the access through the site is safe and efficient. So with that, we are in full agreement with staff. We appreciate your time. We know it's getting late and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? And again, as with the last time, we will open the public hearing and then invite the applicant back up at the end. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ship. Thank you, Wes and Colleen. It is 8:17. I would like to, excuse me, open the public hearing. I know, I'm trying to be... I would like to open the public hearing on the preliminary subdivision plan application and resolution for 14415 Greenview Drive filed by C.S. Patuxent Greens LLC. And we will open the public hearing at 8:17. I have a number of people signed up that have identified the agenda item. I am surmising that those that don't have an agenda item are probably this one, so I will go through and we'll start with Wendy Gegan. Welcome, Wendy. If you would please... Oh, I'm sorry. For this, we are going to limit the time to three minutes and I'm going to ask Rick to help be my timekeeper. And I would again like to remind that this is, we are specifically discussing the subdivision plan application, which is the number of units, which is the access that has been shown. We are not talking about the landscape plan or the conservation plan at this point. Ms. Gegan?
Yeah, my name is Wendy Gegan. I live at the end of Greenview Drive in the cul-de-sac. Can I ask questions of them? I mean, that's basically...
No, I'm sorry. The time for asking questions...
But that's all I want to do. I mean, I don't have any big, long, whatever.
All right, I'll just make statements.
What about visitor parking? I understand from the plans I saw that two-car garages for each of the residents, whether they're townhouses or single-family, but then there was an extra space for the single-family houses. But on weekends, even where we live, it gets very crowded. People are parking in the streets and everything else when there's, you know, World Series or holidays or whatever. And I'm just wondering what plans are being made for that because I could see a lot of cars parked along these streets, you know, at times.
Thank you. I'll be listing some of the questions and those that we can answer. For example, I will answer and then ask staff to confirm. And if it's something for the applicant, we will say, okay?
There's just one more thing.
Sure.
Have you, I think this is appropriate to talk about it here. Have you started thinking about where your school bus stops are going to be? Because, you know, that's an issue. You can't pass a school bus and so, you know, that's going to be something that needs to be worked in.
Okay, I believe those are two things that I'll be able to...
Okay.
I'm going to list the questions.
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Gegan. Margot Osborne, welcome.
Yes, hello. My name is Margot Osborne and I live at 14239 Greenview Driveway. And I'm not sure that this applies here. In the discussion that they had, they talked about footpaths as well as, you know, walking and as well as car traffic. And I know that my development has a footpath, well, behind the tennis courts, down into the grove. I mean, how is this affect what current footpaths our development has?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We'll get you that. Thank you.
Three minutes, that's all.
You can speak again on eight and nine at those times.
I can, thank you very much. Then I'll continue on. About a year ago exactly, September 28, 2017, is when I became aware of this development. It was in the article in the Laurel Leader, and I'm going to read part of it very quickly. "Mr. Cohen plans to keep the golf course running for at least two more years while operating the clubhouse as a banquet hall indefinitely. I would keep the banquet facility and spend some significant dollars to bring it to current standards costing between $2 million and $3 million," Cohen said. "It does a lot of business for weddings, parties, and meetings. A complete overhaul of the clubhouse, expected to take eight months, includes renovations to the inside and outside of the building, such as new kitchen bathrooms and deck. The renovated, dale venue will provide a space up to 250 people. We'll tear it down to its shell, keep the structure, and redo the outside and completely redo the inside," Cohen said. "It's a long process to get my approval to build homes there, but if it doesn't work out, I'll keep it as a successful golf course." I bring you to October 4, the amended technical staff report. Phase one, the existing clubhouse will be demolished within its entirety. So everything that was warm and fuzzy, had some empathy towards our city, towards its citizens, towards the residents at Patuxent Greens, everything that the developer promised has now not been true. One other point I want to make out is because when Christian mentions about the whole protocol on what the developer did, she mentioned about a community meeting and how they fulfilled all that. Well, they did not do that at first and the only reason they did that was because of Billy. He came out at one of the meetings because they had sent certified letters out to everybody and nobody got them. And the citizens came up and they complained about the meeting, that it wasn't, wasn't properly done. So Mr. Welford brought up about the big sign board, brought that up. And I, at that meeting on January 19, although they only have put in here that 60 persons attended, there were 90 persons there because I was there and I counted each one of them. And at that meeting, this was supposed to be a community meeting on this development. Mr. Cohen got up at the beginning of that meeting and he stated to the whole crowd in there, "I do not want to hear any negative things about my development. It's going through no matter what. I just want ideas to make it better." That's the way he started off that meeting. And being new to the council, this is one of my first developments, has gone throughout the process. This is all the materials that I have gathered over a year. And it doesn't include the computer, what I've saved on my computer and everything. And my projection as a council member was transparency and some sort of integrity would gain public trust. And it shows from this initial article, which was made just to make everybody feel a little bit good about it. Everything on here has gone to take the advantage of the developer, not the citizens. At the last meeting, you talked about the access coming in. You talked about reducing the project by 100, 125 units. That has not happened. They've had a long time since this meeting. And at the bottom of this meeting, it'll tell you about the traffic, it'll tell you about the other things that was discussed at the meeting, and nothing was done other than to promote more money-making for the development. Thank you very much.
Steve Savery? That was for one of the other, there's nothing there. Okay. So I've got that sheet. Sarah Pugh, welcome.
Thank you. I am Sarah Pugh and I'm here to represent the 20th Hole project, which is part of the development, not part of the development, but like it co-joins with the development. And our main issues have been all along about parking. And Kristen brought this up earlier when she identified the number of parking spaces and so forth. So we just want to make sure that we have, you know, legal documents, and I know everybody's aware of it, that qualify the number of parking spaces that our building can have. Additionally, we're concerned about the swimming pool, which is in community property, which is owned by the City of Laurel. And at this point, I'm not sure that there has been a rectification of how that parking is going to commingle with the rest of the parking and how it's going to be substantial enough in order to host the people that attend the pool or activities that are given there in that city-owned building. I think both of those are pretty valid issues that do need to be worked out before going much further. And I, you know, the other thing we mentioned was the pond. Pond is great of, you know, was part of the initial building, the builder building. And it's suffering a little bit right now, but 20th Hole has substantiated their ground with gabions. So we're pretty solid and we also put down 132 pilings. I don't think the city has done that and I'm kind of concerned about how they're going to help the city maintain the integrity of their land and at the same time being able to maintain the pond. There's a ton of runoff that comes from the city through those culverts. We've all witnessed it, we know it's there. And that land that is owned by the city is slowly but surely kind of going away because of the flow that's through there. So I don't know what's been done in terms of the plan to help those issues. Anyway.
Thank you. I would like to pause just to ask the question of the city land versus the developer land and the ponds. If you could just clarify...
One minute.
No, just, no, wait right there for a second. I just want to make sure we're understanding in terms of property and all of that.
The pond is owned privately by Mr. Cohen. There are access easements for the drainage. As we've talked about before, the pond is not developed as a stormwater pond and we'll get into that in the site plan. So some of these questions really get there. But it is a private pond, but it will be regulated...
Okay.
...as we develop it.
Okay. Thank you. Any more points? I have both ears that we...
Just to the point of the fact that, you know, even though the pond is owned.
That's okay, thank you.
The pond is owned and, you know, certainly understand that, by the developer.
I wasn't.
So we need to just, I'm just trying to qualify what's going to, how the city is going to be part of that and the establishment of their property. And I don't, there was, I have one other quick question maybe about parking out front. One of the plans, and I don't know if this is...
You can, I'm going to keep, I'm going to write the questions up here and then we'll...
Okay. One of the, I've seen several different plans for the parking and I know that they've made a lot of effort in trying to get the parking all situated. We have a small piece of land that is our property that kind of sticks out on the front. I had no other way to put it and it just kind of sticks out on the front. It's got a tree in the middle of it. And we've talked about removing that and adding parking spaces in order to help our building and help our clients. And at that point, I also want to make sure though that that land, that parking space remains 20th Hole's property.
Okay, so you'll speak to that when you get it. Oh, this LTC Corporation was another. Philip Hughes.
He's with the development team.
Oh, okay.
Maybe a number of folks on there.
That's fine, if you'll just... Matthew Leiken?
Yes.
Thank you. Silburn Soder, or Soden? Could have been from one of the other. These are people that don't have an... Cheryl Dyer? Cheryl? Cheryl? That will be, thank you very much. Okay. Wes, we have heard from Wes. David Bader was. Glenn Olson. Welcome, Glenn.
Thank you. Is it possible to show some slides?
Yes. Well, do we already have them?
No. I have mine on the thumb drive.
It's, how many slides are there?
Four.
Are they of flooding?
Yes.
Then, let's go ahead and give them to him, and let me call the next person, and you'll be able to do that within three minutes, I believe. Would you be able to load up the three slides?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if, if you will just take, he'll, while he's doing that, Kelsey Enstace?
Madam Chair, if I could, the stormwater management presentation is part of the site plan and the flooding.
The site plan? Very good. Mr. Olson, we will have those, that, because that's why I was asking if it was the flooding. To, to Mr. Ship's point, that is part of the site and landscape plan, that will be part of the next one, but you're welcome to speak. So, do you want to wait to speak?
Okay.
Very good, but he'll go ahead and get those. Ms. Enstace? Use, oh, E-U, I'm sorry, I should have remembered for the last time. Thank you and welcome.
My name is Kelsey Eustace. I live at 14224 Greenview Drive. First off, I just wanted to say thank you to the planning commission. I felt like when the residents from the existing neighborhood testified at the last meeting, I felt like we were heard and listened to, and I just wanted to say thank you. I also wanted to speak about number seven. The yum, the number of proposed units, while it has been cut back to 389, is still more than doubling the 288 units that exist there now. It's just too many, it's still too many, we need to cut it back, especially when we still just have a single access and there is no alternative access point. It makes me feel unsafe. What about a fire, and we're all trying to evacuate during a fire, or the WSSC floods us out, as has happened in the past, these things have not been addressed. It's just been about emergency vehicles getting in, not everyone getting out. I, and, also to address the parking with the pool, on weekends during the summer, they have pool parties almost every weekend. Where are all those people going, the park for the pool parties? I feel like they're going to park in my neighborhood, because that's the easiest, you just park on the street, and you walk over there, because they're going to run out of spot. And I feel like that hasn't been addressed either. And that's, I think, everything I have to say about number seven.
Thank you very much. Michael Haggerty.
Good evening. My name is Michael Haggerty. I live at 14113 Greenview Drive, as does my father, sitting in the back right. I'll be real quick, I'll hit a few points, and then I'll get out of the way. 580 units times two vehicles, that's about 1,160 cars coming out of the current developments. Proposably, half of them leave Greenview Drive, half of them leave out of the Clubhouse Drive area. 389 proposed units times two vehicles, 778 vehicles, leaving out of the roundabout, the Clubhouse Drive, for a total of 1,358 cars, potentially leaving out during rush hour and returning, I mean, in the morning and leaving, coming back in the evening time. So, I think that the depiction up there was, is probably a little light on the traffic backup that's going to happen. As far as emergency operations, if there's a fire, that's going to bring seven fire trucks and ambulants and two supervisors, so the impact of the small boxes in the, in the diagram is probably significantly underestimated, it's going to cause a significant jam. The turn lane on 197 is much appreciated. I totaled my first vehicle in 2003, because I was unable to see making that left-hand turn into, into the intersection, and I got plowed, totaled my vehicle, and my father was very angry. However, the backup onto 198, or from 197 to 198, if you put that as a red light, it's going to back up all the way down to Stewart Manor. It, it sort of backs up right now periodically, but if you have it as a solid red, when nobody can turn, it's going to come back out of that little cove, and it's kind of going to come back down onto 197 further. And I've seen a multitude of vicious accidents in that, in that intersection over the last 15 years that I've lived in the neighborhood. I would say that there's a number of residents that surround my dad's house that have left. Many of them are 20 or 25-plus-year residents of this neighborhood that are fearful of what's going to happen when this development comes in here, and what's going to happen to their property value, that's a real issue for these people. What's going to happen to their property value, the floodplain issue is a whole separate thing, and several houses have just been straight up turned into rentals, because people don't want to hedge their bets on what's going to happen. The negative impact that this plan has had on the community is substantial. I hear about it all the time from my dad, when we have very heated discussions on it. And the second entrance to development should be imperative, not optional, for this project to be considered, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. John Haggerty. Did he want to speak? You represented both. You represented both. I believe I have covered everyone that had previously signed up. Is there anyone that signed up that I missed? First, is the first question. And secondly, is there anyone that did not sign up that would like to speak on this issue? Welcome, if you would please come and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kusa Hammack, 14223 Summit Lane. I do appreciate the developers having heard our comments and our feedback that we provided during the last meeting, but I still feel that their plans are very short for most of the concerns that we have. Speaking in terms of the accessibility in and out of the community, there's still no dedicated right-hand lane into the community, so now that we have more coming from 197, turning right into the community, there's no dedicated right-hand lane, that was not addressed. We also voice our concerns that if we have a dedicated left-hand turning signal coming from 197 into the community, that there would be the potential for backup, as another resident had just pointed out as well. That still has not been addressed, because we had even suggested maybe making that a two-lane turn into the community, as well as, I think, most of the diagrams and other examples that were provided of other communities that have been built into the county was very helpful, and I, I feel that it provided a good overview. However, it does not address the concerns that we have, because I think they are not looking at it from the standpoint that if that 197 entrance is blocked, which it occasionally has been, and actually, I have to say, we're actually overdue for an accident into the community, there's no way to get in. And so, because there is the availability of land behind the community that's being proposed, there is the opportunity for an additional way into the community to be addressed, and I feel that that sufficiently has not been addressed by the developers for the community. So, again, I do appreciate their efforts in trying to address our concerns, but I feel that it just simply went in one ear and out the other, and I hope that they have the occasion over the weekend to be blocked access to either get to their homes or to get out of their homes because of something, because that's something that is a reality for all of us residents living in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this application? Okay. Before I invite you up, Mr. Ship, a couple of things that I would like to go ahead and try and address, and then I'll ask the staff to clarify that I correct. The first two things that came up, both on parking and school bus, the city has very, it's probably the thing that's in front of us the most is the parking. So, we have very specific parking, how would we say, rules and regulations and numbers and things like that. So, the, part of the technical staff report with the developer meets or exceeds our city guidelines. Is that correct, Ms. Polly?
That is correct. With the overflow parking, with the reconfigured parking lot, and the parking that's going to be provided on-site, as well as some of the street parking, it's, they have sufficient parking that meets or exceeds the code.
Thank you. In terms of the school bus stops, that was somewhat addressed earlier, several meetings ago, just in terms of not necessarily where those will be, and I think that will partly be with the, with the school system. However, what was addressed, and if you will just confirm that I'm correct, what was addressed is that the, the turnarounds and the, the space available on the streets meets or exceeds the, the code and the regulations for the school systems. Is that correct?
That is correct. And we also got a notice from Prince George's County Public Schools that the applicant shall supply appropriate pick-off and drop-off locations for the students, and ensure that there's appropriate sidewalks for them to get to the school, to their bus locations to be picked up.
Thank you. And transparency was raised, and I, I would just like to touch on this for a second, and I know that Mr. DeWalt brought it up in terms of, of how we send out notices, how we're required by law, how we did have the, you know, additional meetings, and we have had a lot of community involvement, and there have been some changes, they have not met everyone's needs or things like that, but one thing that I appreciate about being on this commission, and I hope that, that you all do understand, is that we are as transparent as we possibly can be, both the staff, the notices that we put out. And again, at the last meeting, we had many questions, and we know that time is money, but at the same time, we had questions, and we, we delayed so that we could get additional Egress, I wrote down, and I apologize, I don't remember why I wrote that, so if anyone remembers that. Oh, the what? The right, the right-hand lane, I want the, thank you, I want the applicant, I'll have, have Mr. Ship. Questions that I have for staff before we move back to the applicant. In reference to the, the questions raised by Ms. Pugh representing 20th Hole, legal documentation, before we take the vote, are we resolved to the, the property and the, and the, the issues that she raised? In terms of their parking spaces, not the, not the city maintenance yet.
Yes, ma'am, yes, madam chair. So, actually, in the site plan, staff reporting resolution, there is a condition that the applicant and the owner of 20th Hole, they shall work together to get a shared parking agreement with the adjacent office building, and submit it to the city prior to the issuance of the first building permit. And within that condition, the applicant shall work with the owner of the office building to designate spaces as required for office use during regular office hours, and install appropriate signage for the office complex.
Okay. So, that will be under site plan, and that will be a condition, then, before permits are issued. Okay. So, I hope that addresses the one that you had. The issue that was raised in terms of helping the city maintain the city property, I would just like to commit the phone calls that are necessary, because our, usually, our city keeps all of its properties the best, so if you're noticing something that maybe something hasn't, I would encourage you to contact the city, and whether it's our Public Works or, or Parks and Recreation, or whoever it is, I'm sure that, that those things will be maintained. Okay. And parking with the pool, again, I want to make sure that whatever is approved, or that any technical report includes, making sure that, that those things are addressed.
Yes, ma'am. I would just like to note that there is sufficient parking for the space, and one thing to point out, that currently, the golf course banquet facility operates as a banquet facility in the year-round, and then there's the pool that operates during the weekends, and the office complex, the building, is closed. With the golf course closing, it will no longer operate as a banquet facility, which will somewhat eliminate the traffic and the congestion. So, with the 135 spaces, with the reconfigured parking lot, the 29 overflow parking spaces, there should, and there's some parallel street parking spaces as well as you enter the community, there should be sufficient parking for everyone. Also, I'd just like to note that there hasn't been any calls to the city regarding parking issues since I've been here.
Thank you. Any questions for Christian before I bring Mr. Ship back up and present some of the questions? Mr. Ship, if I could, oh, go ahead, if I could have you come back up and let me ask you a couple of the questions that I wrote, and then give you the opportunity to, for any closing remarks before. The first is, if you could just touch on the current path network versus, I believe they're separate, but I wanted you to make.
Sure. And, madam chair, you'll see this more in the site plan, but the existing pathway network is obviously not on our property, and we won't be touching it. We have an extensive pathway network throughout our proposed community. We've said on the record a couple of different times that we're happy to make a connection to the existing neighborhood. We don't want to presume where that should be, but in follow-up discussions, if, if it's worthwhile, we think that's a valuable recreational opportunity for everybody.
Thank you. And again, in terms of the, the 20th Hole, you're in agreement that, that there will be an agreement before occupancy permits, so that will.
Right. We're in agreement with the condition that was proposed for the site plan. I know the city doesn't get involved with private agreements between parties, but, but requiring us to produce it is something we're comfortable with.
Thank you. And the last one that I have, that I wrote down here is the, and I do believe we had discussed it, and I haven't heard any, any resolution or, or final on it, and that is the right-hand turn, dedicated right-hand turn on, I guess it would be northbound 197 into the development.
We talked about that early on, and then as our discussions with the community meetings came out, folks said, you know, really, what is the most critical issue? Is that left-hand turn, because of the non-dedicated left-hand turn. We then went to state highways and found out that they actually have an existing plan for the improvement of that intersection, and that is the improvement that they recommend to make that entire intersection work better. And getting to some of the other points about backups and delays on 197, whatever's proposed with that is going to need to be reviewed and approved by state highways, because they have jurisdiction over that road, and, and they're going to have to require us to do the documentation to make sure there's not those kind of backups that.
But is there an opportunity to put in the right-hand?
I don't think so, because the state highway's plan for the right-of-way does not include it, and there's not right-of-way there, and I don't, I think that their priority was that left-hander.
Okay. Thank you. Those were all of the questions that I believe came up that I wanted to, on behalf of the, those that spoke. Okay.
Okay. I do want to maybe add a couple to some of the comments that came up. Christian did verify that we have sufficient parking per code. We've also built in, especially in the more dense area, the townhouse section, some separate areas of parallel parking in addition to code. So, we've tried to incorporate some on-street parking, and then, of course, we had the, the big parking lot at the beginning of the development, which frankly, we're repurposing from the existing situation, but is, is a little bit unusual in terms of subdivision proposals, and I think it represents a lot of parking that is available for the city's facility for the office building and for our facility. The clubhouse, as it stands now, one of the problems with it is that it's in the flood zone. Obviously, that's what we've been talking about for a long time. And when we met with your city staff about that, one of the issues with that is it counts against the city's rating for flood hazard properties, and causes you to be downgraded if you have too many flood hazard buildings, and so that's also one reason, not the only reason, but one reason why the clubhouse is not being retained. It's not up to code, it's, it's not modern. So, that evolved, but ever since we have filed applications, we've been consistent with our plan for that clubhouse, that it would be a new facilities with, with a new The pond itself, of course, will be owned by the project, by the HOA, will be maintained, and will be approved initially for whatever improvements that have to happen there by Prince George's County Stormwater Management Review, you'll hear more about that, and then also permitted through the county for any work there. Our hope is that it will become a naturalized inviting amenity, not a. Our hope is that it will become a naturalized inviting amenity, not a stormwater pond with a fence around it. Some comments were made about the access and the blockages. I think that our exhibits showed that, that we have looked at that in a number of different places throughout the subdivision, and it's not just ways to get in, it is ways to get out. So if there was a blockage, we do show ingress and egress. In addition, there was mentioned a fire facilities trucks and that, and, and just as we tested all the roads for turning radius for buses, we tested it for fire trucks, and I think your staff required us to use the largest template of Montgomery County's fire truck, which is apparently the biggest one around. The discussion about the number of vehicles that would be coming through the intersection or the circle at peak hour, our traffic study, prepared by our traffic expert, who is qualified to testify and to provide reports in that subject matter in accordance with accepted standards by, accepted guidelines by your staff, by the county, by the state, has a quite different picture of that, all those cars don't come through all in the peak period. So the simulation that you saw is accurate during the peak period, we actually run the number of vehicles through that simulation. We mentioned the backups on 197 will be looked at by state highways. So in summation, I do want to thank you for your time and everybody's attention to this. I know it's, it's been a long haul. We are hopeful that we've answered your questions and tried to give you follow-up information about what we could pursue and, and make this a safe and efficient neighborhood. We think it will be a positive addition. Our density is well within the realm of the allowed densities for the PUD, the lot sizes, it's lower than the surrounding density in terms of units per acre. We do not wish to have the density reduced further. We're at 389, we were approved for up to 450. This is a very expensive project to reclaim and to build, and of course, the yield is what pays for that. And we think we've made a reasonable attempt to create a, really a beautiful subdivision, preserving lots of areas of open space, and you'll hear about that in the site plan, in a way that balances the density but allows the project to be viable. And so with that, we would request your approval, consistent with the staff's recommendation and all their conditions of approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I will close, close the public hearing at 8:54. If there are no further questions for staff, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I will move to approve the preliminary subdivision plan application and resolution 18-05-PC at 14415 Greenview Drive, as filed by the applicant.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, I will second that.
Ms. Colly, if you will please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody that came out in all these different meetings. I think we've come a long way with this development. I think the developer's been very amenable. I always appreciate Mr. Ship's even, even hand on this, even when I'm giving him a hard time. So I will vote aye.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
I am a no. I do appreciate what the developer has done, but I am, and I did travel to all of the properties, and I do believe, I am the last to vote, so this, this, this has approved, and I'm, but the, the access and egress was my issue, and not, not emergency, because I appreciate what, what the city has done in terms of those things. And if people are trying to get out, just, everybody's going, there's not going to be an in-road, everybody will be going out. So I don't have those issues. The density became, became my real issue, and I, but I do look forward, going forward, working with, with the developer as we go forward, but I am a no. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I would, can we take, let's take about a five or six-minute break?
Couple hours.
No. But what I would like to do, because those of you that are here for eight and nine really are linked, those two agenda items, so I will ask, we will just take those together, and that way, we will vote separately, but that way, if you're here to speak to those. So, thank you. We will temporarily recess at 8:56, and let's come back by, by 9:05. Thank you.
I would like to resume the 561st meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission. And please note, Councilman Smalls is not late. I started earlier than I said, so. As stated before we took the break, I will now ask staff to please present on Agenda Item 8 and Agenda Item 9. We will have a joint public hearing on the application and separate final actions and motions. Agenda Item 8 is the Final Site and Landscape Plan Application and Resolution Number 18-06-PC-14415, Greenview Drive, filed by C.S. Patuxent Greens LLC. And Agenda Item 9, Forest Conservation Plan Application and Resolution Number 18-04-PC-14415, Greenview Drive, filed by Patuxent Greens LLC.
Good evening again, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. The applicant is seeking Final Site and Landscape Plan approval as well as forest conservation approval to redevelop the Patuxent Greens Golf Course into a residential community. A planned unit development zone is used to describe a type of development in the regulatory process that permits a developer to meet overall community density and land use goals. PUD zones promote flexibility and design standards similar to the city's mixed-use transportation-oriented zone, revitalization overlay, and neotraditional overlay zones. The goal of those zones are to develop communities that are compact, walkable design, have open spaces and recreational areas, but mostly important, create higher standards of community design. Even though the subject site is not a neotraditional zone, the design is neotraditional in nature. As stated during the preliminary subdivision plan presentation, the proposed community will consist of 389 residential units with 222 townhouses and 167 single-family homes. The proposed units will vary in size. The development will also include a new 6,784-square-foot clubhouse, an outdoor gazebo terrace, a 3,000-square-foot pool, generational playground, as well as a tot lot. 2.5 acres of recreational trail systems equating to three miles with two entry points or routes for residents to enjoy, a comprehensive sidewalk system, other open space and passive recreational areas throughout the community. The applicant will meet required landscaping with planting over 200 trees and shubs to the community throughout, as well as provide adequate buffering by exceeding the 20-foot minimum code requirements for single-family as well as for the townhouse development. They will also have stormwater management facilities, and the sign will have one community monument sign not to exceed six feet in height. All construction will be required to be two feet above the base flood elevation level, and all structures will be required to have a flood elevation certificate on file with the city. As stated earlier, the proposed community will have a total of 1,470 parking spaces, including a reconfigured parking lot in the front by the Cabana Pool Complex that the city owns, as well as the office building that we were just speaking about. The proposed development has a five-year build-out timeframe with four phases. Phase 1 will have 57 units. Phase 2 will have 91 homes. Phase 3 will have 130 units. Phase 4 will have 111 units. Each phase is scheduled to take approximately 15 months to complete. As previously stated, as well, the applicant, there are several other approvals from various agencies that will be required from Maryland Department of Environmental, FEMA, WSSC, DPI, and the applicant will be required to submit those approvals, or letters of those approvals, to the city to keep on file. For the forest conservation portion of the project, it's required to be able to develop the project and to mitigate some of the stormwater management issues as well as the flooding issues. As stated earlier, they're proposing to build 389 dwelling units. The applicant is proposing to clear 12.03 acres of land for the project and retain approximately 80% of 55 acres of pre-existing forestry, 48 acres of natural regeneration of the forestry, 27 acres of interior green space will be for the community. So that means 68% of the site will be green. The proposal to remove the trees that are on-site is to address the stormwater management issues as well as to effectively store floodwaters for the project as the site will be raised up and out of the floodplain. Also, the work to be done will assist in mitigating flood issues for the existing neighborhoods as well as protect the new development as well. Prince George's County reviews and approves store of water management for development projects. Prince George's County requires that compensatory storage is provided to offset the amount of 100-year floodplain reduced through filling. The applicant currently has their concept stormwater management application pending with Prince George's County. The trees that will be removed were planted for landscaping purposes for the use of the golf course. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the Final Site and Landscape Plan application for 14415, Greenview Drive, Patuxent Greens Golf Course, to redevelop the property into a residential community of 389 units with the 32 conditions listed in the revised technical staff report. Also, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the forest conservation plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? This staff report for Agenda Item 8, the amended technical staff report, comes with 32 actual conditions to go along with, as Christian was outlining. One thing, and again, I'll go back to Parks and Rec because I love all of our city services, but Parks and Recs is one of my favorites. Recommended requesting a maintenance agreement be put in place to ensure the developer and HOA maintains the property in a reasonable manner consistent with city code and standards. I did not see that in the technical report. Is there any reason the applicant would have a problem with that?
No, the applicant agreed with all the conditions that was listed within the technical staff report, and then the agreement, they will provide that to the city.
Oh, so if it's in, this is just in a comment, it was not listed as one of your conditions? I didn't see it anywhere in all those conditions. Everything else was pretty much.
You would not object.
Not object, okay.
Part of number seven.
Thank you. Okay. There are no questions for staff. Mr. Ship?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, again, William Ship with the Law Offices of Amali Miles in Calverton. Here for the applicant, this is the part that we think is, that we've been waiting to show for you because it is the most creative part of the process. Not that the folks who were involved at the other presentation weren't doing a very important job, but we really liked this part of the presentation. We're going to touch on a number of issues in terms of how the plan was built, and I mean from a planning standpoint and put together, how we're dealing with some of the issues that are very important, like stormwater management and correcting the existing flooding situation. And we'll also talk about just how the plan becomes a community, and that's what we're trying to do here. I do want to say at the outset again, we thank Christian for all her help and all staff. We had a number of meetings on this, and we came together on virtually every issue. We are in full agreement with the staff report and the 33 conditions I think we might end with, and if we're lucky enough to get that approval, we'd be happy to add that one in as well. What I'm going to do now is bring up the landscape architect planner for the project. Matt Lakin is from Rogers and Associates, and he's going to walk you through some slides that show you how the project evolved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, for the record, Matthew Lakin, landscape architect with Rogers Consulting, 1101 Mercantile Lane, Largo. Yeah, so Bill has just mentioned, I may have to turn my back occasionally to point to the plan, because a lot of the things, okay, fantastic, a lot of things I'm going to talk about really frankly are qualitative in nature, and I think they're going to require an awful lot of pointing to the plans so you can understand where we are. So, our role as the principal land planner for the project simply was to create a high-quality community, and a lot of things go into that. And so, the first slide that we have here, actually this was supposed to be the first slide here, was the Opportunities and Constraints map. That Opportunities and Constraints map really was kind of the beginning point of how we synthesized the land plan from the onset. The property is bounded by the white margins right here, again, 192 acres. I think some of this is going to be remedial, but I think it's, like I said, it's very important because it's an awful lot of code, regulation, cultural, and physical aspects that go into the synthesis of this land plan. Clubhouse Boulevard, the main entrance, obviously, which has been a topic of debate early on. Greenview Drive, the primary access point to the existing golf course. The property as it functions today goes right into an existing parking lot, which directly abuts the condominium community to the north. That was an area we put a note on. That's what those triangles represent on this land plan, and you're going to see an awful lot of those triangles on this side of the property frankly, because that's really where we took the most time in terms of understanding the context of how the existing neighborhoods to our north and our south function, what the compatibility options are. And again, in the spirit of this map, the opportunities where we can improve and the constraints where there may be a poor situation that we can improve upon. This was one area that we thought clearly we could improve upon. Existing surface parking lot with this storage and maintenance shed for the existing golf, you know, where they have chemicals and gas and pesticides and things of that nature being mixed for the property. Again, that was something we thought was a big opportunity for, and we'll show you on the land plan how we addressed that. Additionally, from a land use perspective, the Bear Branch Stream Valley Park, which is a passive park owned by the City of Laurel, to the north, we took note of that. Again, given the proximity to the portion of the property that we have that we will be putting into an open space preservation easement, we thought that was an important relationship that we needed to make sure that we accommodated with our land development plan. As well, from an open space and connectivity perspective, this is the north end of the Patuxent River Park. This is public park ground, so again, we thought this was another opportunity for a corridor. And again, when I talk about these corridors, they can be many things. They're predominantly passive, but really they're opportunities for habitat corridors, higher-performing environmental metrics, things of that nature. Of course, the single-family neighborhood to the southwest, Patuxent Glen, we pulled Platts and noticed, again, the proximity of Snow Hill Manor Public Park has a, almost like a pipe stem-type HOA space that connects that. We thought, boy, that would be really great if we could get a connection through these points. Again, from a future land use perspective, it's always great to link to create green infrastructure is the buzzword in planning circles so that you do have habitat quarters, you have higher-performing environmental standards. Of course, again, you have the City of Laurel Dedicated Park just south of the Cabana, the Greenview Drive Pool Complex in Cabana. And what we thought really from a physical perspective, you know, the setting today with the pond that exists, there's two real, there's multiple ponds, but there's two real ponds that we thought had real intrinsic value from an aesthetic perspective. We understand and recognize, you know, the functional limitations, and Phil Hughes, civil engineer, is going to go over how we're going to enhance that from a functional perspective. But aesthetically, we just thought this was a dynamite opportunity for us to incorporate that physical feature, enhance it, improve it, and perhaps utilize it as an organizing element for the neighborhood. So, clearly, the biggest, I think, qualitative benefit or improvement that's going to enhance the value of not only the neighborhood that we're trying to create, but the existing and surrounding community, is the first to address the public health, safety, welfare issues caused by the existing FEMA floodplain that's out there today. That's the blue that you see. This is Greenview Drive, Clubhouse Boulevard, and you can see that there are literally dozens of existing structures located within the floodplain. I'm sure the homeowners who live there understand and know that they are in a mapped floodplain. And those are very serious issues that this project, post-development, this is what the post-development floodplain will look like after it's developed. So, as you can see, largely, all of those facilities, those structures, and even the roadways, you know, there's been a big conversation about adequacy of roadways and so forth. Well, now the floodplain will be off to the eastern margin of the property here and contained. So, a lot of the key issues, I think, have already been discussed. I'm going to touch on them very briefly. The density analysis and compatibility, I think, has already been talked about, and then really go into some imagery and some of the land planning techniques that we employed to create, you know, again, contextual neighborhood. This is the density analysis. I'm not going to reiterate on this. It's basically two to three units per acre, depending on how you calculate the gross versus net. This is the net analysis. There's the summary. And again, this was the land plan, which really started to create the framework of the neighborhood. As I mentioned, the pond facility, really a fantastic opportunity to create an organizing singular element that really is a direct interface with the community at the main entrance. It's going to be clearly where the note of activity is going to take place. And then the second phase of that was to create, again, this is a very classic PUD circulation design, a ring road effectively, but it's a tertiary road. It's a local road that, you know, forms a circle, and so by its nature, it has redundancy. It also has the added benefit from a pedestrian perspective of creating a natural circuit for joggers, for people who want to start at one point, walk around a circle, and then end at a point without having to turn around. It's just intuitive. It's, like I said, it's a very classic design. The main entry, which again has been a big conversation point in terms of public health, safety, welfare, which is critical, presents really another great opportunity, which I'll get in later in terms of how that looks to create an aesthetically pleasing boulevard, much like Clubhouse Boulevard is called boulevard today. It's called boulevard because it's a divided roadway. It really presents a tremendous opportunity to create a wayfinding element, it's a larger scale roadway, but still pedestrian scale. This is the second pond facility that we thought, wow, this would be fantastic because of the fact that it provides a tremendous amount of surface area for residences to both look at, feel, boy, that'd be great if we could get that to be part of the community. It also is part of our environmental site design criteria, which is the state stormwater management regulations. We wanted to make it something more than stormwater management. We want to make it look like a high-performance environmental feature that people can look out their window and enjoy and appreciate. By the way, so from a site context perspective, the site's pretty flat, as we all know, but the low point is generally right here, and so the flow of water through the site is generally from a northerly to a southerly flow. Bear Branch flows south. Patuxent River, obviously, which I missed on the earlier slide, is really the key attribute of the environmental story here. So, that's the whole community right there. And as you can see, I've been told this picture looks like a head of a person in profile view, which it kind of does, but you can see the tremendous amount of open space here, and I'm going to get into some of those characteristics and quantify just how much open space there really is on this land plan.
Excuse me, just one second. Can you go back to that, Bill? I just want to, because the flooding issue has continued to come up. There was a slide a couple back, you don't need to go to it, but the ones with the blue, and now we're on this one. I just want you to confirm, are any of the homes in what you were proposing in the revised, I thought that was the answer, so my full question is, are any of those in the, that you are developing in the revised floodplan, which was the one that was below?
All of our development envelope and all of our structures will be out of the floodplain.
Thank you. Just wanted to, I thought so, but trying to flip back and forth, it looked like some. Okay, thank you.
So, in x-ray vision, this is really kind of the bones of the community. Again, these are the roadways, but recall again, the roadways, these are going to be public roadways with sidewalks flanking both sides, and so you can see the bones of the community, the circular network, the redundancy of streets, I'm sorry, of streets that provide opportunities for alternative methods to get in and out. Sorry, I'm having trouble with this. Okay, so here's the residential lots. This is where it starts to get interesting. So, the eastern side of the property is predominantly single-family detached homes. There's multiple lot sizes and multiple elevations for those homes. Those are fairly conventional, again, consistent with the vernacular of the neighborhood that exists to the south. That is, that the houses are loaded from a vehicular perspective from the front, which is fairly conventional, a driveway in the front, driveway off the major or off the local road. But on the east side of the property here, the townhouses are all in a neotraditional format. And again, the neotraditional format affords an awful lot of virtue, I think, for creating a very context-sensitive design. And we chose to put those specifically at the front of the community, again, near this unifying element, because what the neotraditional format allows us to do, because there are no driveways in the front of these townhouse units, it allows us to put the architectural fronts of those units, fronting onto open spaces, fronting onto, in this case, a single-loaded street, which means there's only units on one side. So, the framing of the space and the volume, which you'll see in some of the simulations that we have, just creates really a tremendous park-like setting for this area. But there are other areas as well. There's a single-loaded road back here, which again confronts the existing, or the new open space that we're providing, so that people have full view of that open space. And much like, you know, beachfront development, the road orientation runs so that both open spaces are visible on both sides of the street. The other virtues of the neotraditional format, it's compact development. It allows this plan to effectively become a cluster plan, and what that means is because the townhouses are more compact, it allows us to consolidate the open space. It allows us to consolidate considerably more open space to the property, as opposed to it being on someone's yard, you know, being mowed grass or so on and so forth. The trails and amenities, this is important, and I think, again, this is based on what I heard from the public's comments, what's really important to recognize and why I think that this neighborhood is really going to help add value to the existing neighborhood is, we have all this open space that we're providing, but what's important to recognize is that all of the sidewalks that we're putting on these streets are going to be public rights-of-way and/or in a public access easement. So, all of the neighbors are going to have the ability to enter, go on the sidewalks, and have the use and enjoyment of those trails. The trail network is a series of five-foot, I believe it's five-foot sidewalks along every public street, but then there's an eight-foot hiker-biker trail that runs along the perimeter, and that perimeter trail really is going to be a fantastic opportunity for people to go walk a dog, go jogging, have, again, visual and functional accessibility to what really is a tremendous open space. And remember, this is just for the property. This connects to the adjoining Patuxent River and the Patuxent Park to the south. And again, there you see it in its totality. So, landscape offers, as part of the Opportunities and Constraints map, we wanted to make sure that we recognized the relationship of the existing homes to the golf course today. On the southern side, at Patuxent Glen in particular, there's about 15 homes that directly abut the golf course, and we wanted to give them a special application or treatment, and not, as Bill mentioned earlier in the previous presentation, we wanted to make sure we had like units confronting that area. Again, single-family detached units confronting single-family detached, but we took it a step further and exceeded the buffer requirement as required by the Plan Unit Development Code, which is 20 feet. And we have a variable width buffer along that area, but at a minimum, we're providing 30 feet, and that exceeds all the way up to 125 feet. So, there's a large open space between single-family homes that exist in Patuxent Glen and also in the Village at the Greens of Patuxent that will be placed in a preservation open space that will effectively remain in perpetuity. They're HOA parcels.
Correct.
And here you see some of those relationships. This is on the northern portion, adjacent to the Village at the Greens of Patuxent, again, 125 feet, and it's kind of static to measure it this way, but the reality is, the reality is, this space is going to feel and function a lot larger. This is the existing trail that exists. I didn't mention that in the beginning slide, but there's a very small segment of trail that exists on the Village at the Greens of Patuxent. You know, connecting into that and allowing that to function, and then again, for the larger neighborhood, people will be able to access that by virtue of a public access easement. I'm going very, I got to go fast here. So, again, here's the buffers that we're showing, adjacent to Patuxent Glen. Green space, just to quantify a little bit, this is the 55 acres north of Bear Branch. We're not proposing to develop that. In fact, that's going to be preserved. Here is the natural regeneration area, and again, they're contiguous. So, between those two, it's almost 100 acres of open space, all told with the interior open space. We have almost 130 acres, which is almost 70% of the total site, which again, very high- high-performance environmental metric by any measure of a cluster development plan. This again shows, again, these are all, all of the purple are the sidewalks. The public can walk on any of those streets. The orange here, the trail, again, public access easement, those are all accessible by the public. And again, these are the triangles that we identified earlier on and how we employed techniques to... Here are the visualizations. I'll go very quick, but these are actual visualizations created from the site plan. This is the main entrance. Again, we're talking about function, but the reality is, this is going to provide a fantastic and aesthetic backdrop for the main entrance. This is at the main entrance. Now, this changed subsequent to that, we now have a circle here. But you can see the neotraditional townhouses and the single-family off to the west. This is the setting we're talking about with the single-loaded road, where you can see neotraditional confronting onto the open space and the pond and the trail that's going to be in public access easement. Neotraditional development, again, no driveways, parallel-on-street parking in a park-like setting. Some of the finer details afforded to us by the PUD and the development standards, an eyebrow with ESD facilities, again, high-performance environmental practices. I'm going to hand this over now to, I guess, Bill.
Well, we have the phasing plan, which you've seen before and we've talked about.
Christian talked to that also.
Yes. So what we want to do now is talk about the stormwater management and the flooding control and the improvements that'll be made. We have, from the engineering firm, again, Phil Hughes is going to come up and talk to us about that quickly.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioner. My name is Phil Hughes. I'm with Rogers Consulting. Our office is 1101 Mercantile Lane in Largo. I'm going to try and make up some of the time, Matt, cost us on this and burn through this. Thank you, Matt.
Be nice to the architect.
I work with him. I don't have to be nice. So we want to start, you know, talk about stormwater management, you know, and there's been a lot of talk about this, about flooding and how this is going to be handled on the site and how the existing site performs. And I might get this clicker wrong, but there we go. Okay. This is the area that currently drains the site, and you can see, it's a huge area. It goes all the way up to Laurel Bowery Road, Clubhouse Drive, Greenview Drive. All that is draining down through either easements into this existing pond, and SHA is draining water there. I don't know why. And then the existing single-family and townhouse, they drain through here, and also there's a drainage area that comes through here. Okay? And one thing I would like to touch on, we're talking about safety and access, and we're changing the flood plane. You're talking about emergency access to communities that if this area floods, don't right now have emergency access. All these roads would be flooded. You wouldn't be able to get EMS down there. You wouldn't be able to get any emergency services down there. With this development and moving the flood plane out to the outside and revising that, you provide safe ingress and egress for all these residents and surrounding communities during a flood situation. They will no longer be flooded and they'll have easy access in and out. All right. This right now is the current area that drains to the pond. And I said previously, all the water on this slide, and I'll just touch on this quickly, drains into here. You have earth dikes or dams around the site. So all the water that comes in here from this whole drainage area has no way out. And we said before, the only way out is through this pump station down at the bottom. So what we're doing is, we've evaluated the drainage area to the pond, and we've coordinated with DEPI. Currently, there is no outfall for the pond. The pond comes in with 70 acres, fills up, spills out the back, down along the back of all these residential lots, floods the park property, which I'm sure, and then comes in through here and floods these irrigation ponds. So you have a lot of water coming in, no way out until it gets down here. So we have been working with DEPI over at the county, and we've coordinated with them. We have a solution to fix the pond. And what we're going to do is, you see all the water coming in from off-site, pretty We are installing to collect our onsite drainage, 95 storm drain inlets plus or minus 16,000 linear feet of pipe, and that will all lead either to the pond or to bio-retention facilities to meet our ESD requirements, or gravel wetlands, which are really workhorses of ESD. They just, they provide so much treatment. Yes, sir. How much, there's zero on pipe. There's, there's no pipe on site right now. There's, there's a little bit, but 60 linear feet.
Zero now.
Okay. So the water will flow into the site, into these ponds, get collected, then it will flow through the culvert that we are installing as an outfall for the pond. So the 70 acres go to the pond. Instead of being routed around the back, we'll get routed to the center draw. We'll install culverts to carry the offsite water that comes through the townhouse development through the site. All of our pipes will discharge into this draw or into our natural regeneration area. Yes, it's four very large culverts.
Bigger diameter of those?
Some of them are 48-inch pipes. You have, you've got a good amount of water coming into this pond, 70 acres. They step down as you move through, and we're also evaluating those so they pass 100-year storm, which technically isn't a requirement, but we don't want to inundate it. And we have also evaluated the flood plane and not only get your technical, the off-peak of when the Potomac peaks, and when our pond peaks, and different things that happen through the site, to make sure that we're not flooding anything. Potomac, the river. And I, and I like to touch on again, these are the approvals, and I believe we've already gone through these, and the big one that we just got was the hydraulic planning analysis through WSSC, which approved our water and sewer layout and our connection points and outfall points for water and sewer.
Can I ask you, for all the pipes and ponds and all, it's all gravity, right?
Oh, no, no pumps. No pumps. Pumps are gone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have a few more slides that are just renderings of the rest of the property. I will run through them very quickly, just so you can get a feel of it. The play area, the pool and the clubhouse, clubhouse, another tot lot, the trail system, which I will mention that we have offered to put a public-use easement on so that the city will have public-use access to the entire trails network. Yes, and maintain. And these are just some of the unit types that the builders are proposing. That's the end of the slide presentation. We went through a lot of stuff. We have everybody here ready to come back up for questions that you might have, and we would appreciate your consideration, and we agree with staff and their conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant before I open the public hearing?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Smalls.
I do have a couple. This is, throughout the various presentations, one of the things I haven't heard about is whether or not there'll be any pervious surfaces on the project that will also deal with water and any reuse onsite of any, any stormwater for some of the landscaping and that sort of thing.
The second point, I don't know that we've addressed the reuse of water. It's a, it's a good idea that we'll take to heart and take back to the team, but the first one, I know, we went through the slides and some of the stormwater management slides showed you some blue areas that were more rectangular shape. Those are referenced as ESDs, which are pervious mechanisms. It's environmental site design that does collect water in those places without being a pond. So that is a pervious treatment area there.
But any of the pavers, sidewalks, that sort of thing, are they?
No, not, not pervious concrete because of maintenance reasons. We had talked about it as possibly on the overflow lot that you saw up by the clubhouse on that circulation, and we're looking at that idea.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no further questions, I will open, open the public hearing. And again, to reiterate, the public hearing on both the final site and landscape plan application and resolution, as well as the forest conservation plan application and resolution. And I would like to start with Mr. Glenn Olson. Mr. Olson, I understand that we were not able to, to load your pictures, but I doubt there's anybody in here that either didn't see him on Facebook or hasn't seen the flooded things. I would also like to have a three-minute limit again. If people can keep it shorter, that would be fine, but I don't want to hinder discussion. So, Mr. Olson, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the council. Yeah, so we've all seen the pictures of Hurricane Agnes and the Howard Johnsons, et cetera. It's interesting that the existing clubhouse is considered a flood hazard building, and I would question why that is, because, probably because in the days of Hurricane Agnes, that was all underwater. These pictures show the water level to, if you look at the US, and that's what I had on my little slideshow, was the USGS contour map, and they show the water levels on the US, the water levels that you see in these various pictures seem to correspond to about the 140-foot level on the USGS contour maps. And the Howard Johnsons is about a tenth of a mile from the train station. According to the developer's plans or his, their statements, the Mark train station is only about two-tenths of a mile from the subdivision. So I think we're, we're talking about basically the same area, possibly, slight difference of about three-tenths of a mile. The current townhouses and single-family houses that are there, if you look at the 140-foot contour line on the USGS maps, again, they just about follow that. And certainly, when those were put in back in the late 1980s, it was only 15 years after Hurricane Agnes. And my guess is, people remembered or knew where the floodwaters were, and that's why the houses only extend as far as they do down onto the lowlands of the golf course. The new development is going in at around the 110 to 120-foot level, if you look at the USGS contour lines. And the site maps that they've handed out, the preliminary forest conservation plans, some of them actually show some of the fill lines, and the fill lines seem to be around 126 to 128-foot level. That's what they're filling up to from what they currently are at 110 to 120 feet. And that's still going to be 12 to 14 feet below water level when Hurricane, the next Hurricane Agnes comes through. So that is certainly, I think, still a concern, that you could get flooding. And stormwater management is one thing, but what, what we're also dealing with is a river that's potentially going to rise and flood, backflood, and that's got to be taken into consideration. Just one more little point on, one of the statements that the developer makes is that they're going to maintain all the existing median strips, et cetera, and public, or not public land, but areas that have been maintained. And they're not even doing that currently. There's a section of the median strip on Greenview Drive, right where the traffic circle is supposed to be, that is just overgrown with, with weeds and grasses right now and not being maintained. It used to be maintained by the golf course people, and it's not currently, hasn't been maintained this year. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Olson. Ms. Eustace, Kelsey Eustace.
Kelsey Eustace, 14224 Greenview Drive. So I can talk about eight and nine.
Correct.
Okay. So I know that the city of Laurel has a lot of pride in being a tree city and that the parks are well-maintained, and I enjoy those recreational facilities. This proposed development is taking away a current recreational facility, and it is destroying 100% of the trees in the area of the fill. I have not heard or seen anything about the proposed trees that they're planning to put in. Are those comparable trees? In the experience video, they did not look like comparable trees at all. They looked like very small, little dinky trees. Nothing like the gorgeous, large trees you have now that absorb water, they support life. We're right next to the Patuxent Wildlife Refuge. I'm sure there are endangered birds that come through as they migrate, and they use those trees. And these little trees in the experience video, they're nothing like the trees that we have now and that are going to be removed. I also saw in some of the slide shows that they were showing trees as tall as houses, but I don't know how that's possible. Is that like a rendering like 50 years from now? Because I, I don't know if I'll be able to enjoy those trees. I'm also curious about the trees at Greenview Drive Park, which is a city of Laurel Park right next to the tennis courts. With all the fill going in around it, how, are those trees going to be destroyed too? Is the fill going to affect them? Or is it going to be this big hole where the park is with all this fill around it that hasn't been cleared up either? And because of all these trees being destroyed, I'm, I'm really not convinced that the land should be developed at all. I know that was something that you guys voted on about a year ago, and I, I would just ask you to reconsider that the city be a steward of the land that is in the city, and we just keep destroying green space and building parking lots, building roads, and what's going to be left for future generations? And then I was also wondering about the permeable surfaces. So thank you for bringing that up, because that was a question I had as well, because we keep laying down concrete and driveways, we're going to become the next Ellicott City. It's just Route One already floods, and then you can't drive on it, and it's dangerous. And frankly, the forest conservation plan, it sounds more like a deforestation plan. So I would ask you all to vote no. Thank you.
Cheryl Dyer.
Hello, everybody. I'm Cheryl Dyer. I live at 310 Fourth Street. Last week in the Washington Post, there was an article about Pakistan planting 10 billion trees to combat climate change. Those trees send out oxygen, they reduce erosion. So here's a country that's beset with violence, poverty, crumbling public services, yet they are looking to the future. They are looking to the future for the planet, for their country, and for their citizens. So I'm asking, how can we do any less? How can we ignore the facts about the trees which hold the sediment from the waters that rush into eventually the Chesapeake Bay? I think the owners and the developers had a responsibility to research all of these effects before they bought the land, before they came to this commission. My plan is to ask the city to purchase the land, keep it to protect the environment, look to the future of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Wendy Gagan. Live at the end of the cul-de-sac of Greenview, where the floodplain still will be, apparently from the slide I saw, which is kind of upsetting. There's all that blue there, right where 17 is now. That's all going to be floodplain. And we have a lot of water that's coming down through that Snowden Woods, I think it's called, area, streams that go into the federal land there that has been restored by WSSC. And now, every time it rains, I've never seen so much water coming on that part of the golf course, as well as what's coming off of our street. I mean, just gushing water. And I don't, I thought that's where some of the fill was coming from, that they were digging that out to use, to, you know, raise the floodplain. And I don't, I think we need to have a meeting just about this whole water management, flood control, and nothing else. And we need to have some experts from FEMA and WSSC and whoever else is signing off on this to come and really explain it. I have, there are no plans at, you know... I have, there are no plans at, you know, for this, as far as I know, because I keep going up and looking at them, and these plans aren't there, and I would like to see those plans. I did get a note from Mr. Hughes at one time that I could come down and look at them, and I didn't. I figured you'd have them. Anyway, I'm really concerned about the flooding. There's two rivers that go through the golf course, and I must be underground, but they show on old maps and even newer maps. And I don't know what they are, but that's going to be a lot to mitigate, too. And there's a whole lot of water coming onto the golf course. It's been, over the years, directed there by the city. It comes, it comes under like where Oakland's elementary school is, and it goes under 197, and it comes out somewhere other than us. I mean, a lot of it. It's not just coming down where the pond is. And I suspect that maybe those two waterways that are running underground under the golf course are old tributaries of Bear Branch and Crow Creek, because that's what it looks like on the old maps. Anyway, there's just a lot to consider about this whole floodplain issue. And then I have one other thing, which is just sort of semi-related. The ponds will be beautiful in your development, but you do need to have them safe defenced, and that's not going to be so beautiful. You can't have little kids running around in a development, you know, with open ponds like that. It was never a problem for the golf course, because the little kids had to be, well, they weren't even there, most of them. But if they were on the golf course, they had to be supervised with an instructor or with a parent. And this is just something that really needs to be, you know, looked at. I guess, I guess that's really all I have to say, except that Michael Hagerty raised the issue that, we're getting very lonely down on Greenview Drive, above about the 16 homes that come down and then go into the cul-de-sac. About eight have been sold and two are rented. That's a, and that was the Gold Coast. That was the prime area because of the view. And that's something to think about, because that's just in the last six weeks, or six months.
Thank you.
Anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Gagin. Margot Osborne, welcome back.
When I first moved in, the area that is now considered, I think, part of the Laurel City Park, right next to the tennis courts, was part of, I guess, the Patuxent Greens Association, Patuxent Glen. I'm not quite sure who owned that land. And it was very well, it was overgrown, it was nasty, and the people in the Patuxent Greens neighborhood went in and cleaned it out, made it really pretty. And then sometime later, Laurel did purchase the land. I guess they purchased the tennis courts. I'm not sure what they purchased and what they haven't purchased, what's going to stay and what isn't. Currently, right now, Laurel is maintaining, doing, I think, a really good job keeping that a very nice area. But I do know that I'm, I don't know who's going to maintain this. If they're going to rip down all those trees, I get, I'm assuming they're going to plant more trees, because that, it's a City of Laurel property, and that costs money. I don't know who's going to do it. I don't know.
Excuse me, can I, I just want to clarify. There's no plan to tear down any trees that are on the City of Laurel property. The forestation plan that we're talking about is the, the, just the current golf course, those older trees that, that are on the golf course.
Yes, this was mentioned by, then you're going to have a big, you're going to have a big gully.
No, we're going to have somebody address that. No, there won't be a big gully or anything. That, we'll have that addressed, we'll have that spoken to. But I want to make sure that you're very clear, and it has been confirmed by the city staff. None, none of that tennis court area and city park area that is currently in the City of Laurel, none of that is anything that we are talking about. This is only what's over, already out on the golf course.
Oh, okay. A lot of, because people misunderstood this.
Oh, no, no.
I mean, that area floods in a really bad, I mean, the trees that grow there, whatever, I mean, they handle, they're four flooded marshy land.
Okay.
And my understanding was that they were going to put more dirt in there, and that would, and they said they wouldn't go above eight feet and wasn't going to affect our homes.
I'll, I'll have the applicant speak, speak to what they're doing on their property, but nothing that is currently, just as, as with your property, they're not doing anything on your property. And if you saw the one slide, and Ms. Gagin, I will have them speak to, but there is not a single house that remains in the floodplain from that development, not one. So all of your houses are coming out of the floodplain under, under theirs, but they're not touching your pro, they're not impacting your property.
Okay, so the, so in other words, taking us out of the floodplain, I was, I was told that, that they were going to bring in dirt.
No. I, let, we will address that. And I took up much of your time, so if you had any other points, but I just want to make sure that you don't leave here, that we don't finish this until we make sure that that is very well understood, because I appreciate you raising that if that is something that's misunderstood.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, I guess that, I get, they talk about green space in this area, and I just don't want them messing with the current green space that I have, when they promote the green space in their new area. Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Carl DeWalt.
So that'll be everybody like that. And I can, I mean, I'll. Carl DeWalt, 422 Prince George Street, Laurel, Maryland. On the October 4th, 2018, they amended technical staff report. One thing that was concerning to me, it states, "The mass grading, removal, and burial of contaminated materials will continue from Phase 1 to Phase 2, 3, and 4 until completion. There will be identified areas at the back of the site where the contaminated materials will be buried." I hope that there's some sort of checks and balances or some sort of regulations on a very constant basis to see if the developer is actually following these contaminated materials and checking for them and properly disposing of them. The other thing is, Madam Chair, just like you, I believe there should be another way to get in and out of the development. But for four years, I lived in Spring House Apartments, and I walked my dogs completely around that golf course numerous times. And we could have saved a lot of trouble at the last meeting, because I could tell you that there's no way they're going to get another road in there anyway, based on what I've seen from the area. The 55 acres north of Bear Branch is nothing but swamps and wetlands. There's no development going there anyway, so that's not even a big plus for us that they keep bragging about these 55 acres north of Bear Branch. This previous owner used to own Roadway Truck Stop, and back in 2009, he proposed a development called Hawthorne Place. It was huge. It fell through, it was supposed to come back in 2014. Again, it was in a floodplain, and it fell through in 2014. It belongs now to another truck stop, Sela. It's, it's probably about the only thing that's going to be able to be put in there is a truck stop. The Patuxent Green Golf Course has been around for 60 years. There's a reason why it's a golf course, because it's not going to stay dry. It's going to flood. And no matter what he promises to develop and what matter, what he does to that for 60 years, it's remained a golf course. And the technology now today, I strongly believe that this is going to be a disaster once it's completed. That's my final thing.
Thank you, Mr. DeWalt. I believe both Mr. Hagertys have left. Asia from Summit Lane, I believe she is no longer here. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on these two agenda items? Okay, I will very quickly go through my, oh, I'm sorry. Welcome, if, welcome back if you would restate your name and address. I believe Mr. Coyle.
Yes, Brian Coyle, 336 Prince George Street in Laurel. And I would just like to say, based on their depictions of what the floodplain will look like after they reclaim the land, which is a misnomer, it doesn't show where the water moves, right? I mean, the water has to go somewhere else. It just shows an absence of water that doesn't happen. It will move farther in another direction, and it will expand the flood zone to other areas where there are existing structures. Alternatively, they could then perhaps grade the area and remove some soil, which will then create more swampy-like area, which won't drain properly, which will just be a source of generation for mosquitoes, and then the only way to, you know, approach that really is with pesticides, insecticide. And these, so that's something that hasn't been addressed accurately. You know, when you would look at the back of those pictures, if you can review those PowerPoints, if they show them again, they just show that that area of the floodplain just disappears. Another thing that needs to be considered is with climate change projections, there is going to be an increase in the amount of water in the Mid-Atlantic region, as well as the intensity of storms. And so the 100-year floods are going to increase by approximately 12 to 25% over the next 30 years. That's not a long timeframe. And also thinking back just 20 years, people who've been in Laurel for some time, 20 to 30 years, about what this area looked like, how much more green space there was, and how much there, how much less there is now compared to that. I think, you know, thinking forward about what we can save for future generations, what kind of areas are they going to have, there's not many left. This is an opportunity for the town to purchase this land, to save this land, to recover this land even, if we wanted, but at least preserve the golf course. Once it's developed, it's gone, that's over, and there won't be much more. This is happening also down, just down the road, 1,600 units are being built, you know, next to Patuxent. It just continues, and this won't be recoverable. And as well, I mean, you know, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. Already, we were told that the golf course would be preserved for a couple of years. That didn't happen. We were told that the existing structure for the banquet hall would be improved. That didn't happen. The people of Laurel at a community meeting were treated with disrespect. They were told that this was going through, whether you liked it or not. I think that needs to be considered. I don't think that the people of this town should be treated in that manner, and I think that especially concerning what was proposed for the pesticides or the chemical dump, you know, I mean, already they've engendered mistrust. And then what's going to be, what's going to happen with that? What's the plan for monitoring those chemicals, those pesticides, that dangerous materials? It's going to be dumped in the floodplain to wash down the Patuxent into the Chesapeake. I think that a lot more review and careful assessment needs to be done with this before it can be responsible, a responsible decision can be made about, you know, how to proceed forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, let me address some of the things that, that were raised during this. In terms of the stormwater management and the, then you can get with the city and look at these, but the 16,000 linear feet of the storm drain pipes that are, that will be moving that water, currently, the pesticides that are on there right now, every time it's flooding, those are going everywhere. The regulations, I, one of, the reason I pointed out before we moved to the public hearing, this technical staff report, which you have access to, can have access to, has 33 conditions on it. And to your point, in terms of, it's not just the City of Laurel that is monitoring. The county has some of the monitoring of the pesticides and, and the things like that. There is very little that can be done to this property, even the City of Laurel approving it before, and I think Christian went through some of the many things that have to be, have to be done. So we believe that we have done a lot of due diligence in making sure that, to your point, the City of Laurel doesn't have all of the expertise around the floodplains or the contours that, that Mr. Olson talked to, or some of those things. But the people that need to clear those and take things in or out of floodplains, it's not the developer, it's not the City of Laurel. Those are all either state, county, state, national things that are being done. And our reports, I believe, can take all of those things in and put some very strict guidelines in that. The other thing I wanted to say is Bear Branch Creek comes up a lot. I, my house backs to Bear Branch Creek. I was a, the first resident to live in the new villages at Wellington, which at the time, before the planning commission, there was a lot of very similar discussion, because Bear Branch Creek and the flooding and, and things like that. And we haven't had it, and I've been there almost 20 years now through, through hurricanes and things like that. So the people that developed that and the work that the city made them go through. So, so that gives me some confidence that this isn't just the five of us sitting up here saying, oh, okay, they've got to get pesticides. And I do want to remind people, this is the City of Laurel in bringing in new residents that we will have services for, and there's nothing that we would want to do, bringing in citizens, if we really thought that there was going to be a development that was just going to keep flooding. And I can't imagine a developer that wants to put that kind of money into something like that. And some of the original owners that have spoken tonight know that when their development first went in, the city had to come to, to some assistance there because of some issues. So I think the city does take care of its own, and we want to do that. I'm sorry, I went on a little bit too long about that. Those are all of the things I believe that came up that I wanted to speak to. Mr. Ship, I would like you to talk about the comparable trees in terms of the forest conservation, and, and that's the only other one that I had before you do your close.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I will go through a number of points that were brought up. I do want to say regarding the forest conservation plan, that we are in compliance with the city's ordinance in terms of requirements of tree preservation and reforestation.
I apologize. I would like to officially close the public hearing at 10:08, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. But we also, as you've heard, we have something like 70% of open space retained within this, this proposal. Now, we are grading, but we are proposing a combination of landscape and, and streetscape-type treatment within the development pod, naturalized plantings around the amenity features like the ponds. But then, as you get down into that open space area, we are proposing to allow regeneration of forested areas within those areas, together with some, some wetland new facilities or areas that will be created. So we're actually creating wetlands, which are a good thing, within this, this property. Right now, the golf course is kept moaned, so the fairways, as we know, are fairways, and there's grass there. There's not trees on the fairways. There are trees in the golf course, and we will be allowing certain, a large part of what is now the golf course to become meadows and forest. And I think that'll be a very nice, naturalized, passive recreation area for the community and the surrounding area because of our trail network. The water management, we had not just the two slides that showed the change in the floodplain and that the floodplain just goes away, we had a lot of slides showing you how the stormwater management is being addressed and how we're picking up the stormwater that currently comes into the property and actually managing it, whereas now it just sits on the golf course. That is the stormwater management plan, it just sits there. And as far as our grading goes to create the development envelope, we cannot grade in a way that adversely impacts the city's property or the adjoining residences, and that's part of the stormwater management review, that's part of the grading plan review, and any number of views. I would say that because of the floodplain nature of this proposal, the, the regulatory reviews on this property are way above what you would see on a property that's located elsewhere. We have the county involved. We have the county involved in terms of their review to look at downstream flooding impacts and making sure they're comfortable. The city, of course, and they actually hired an outside consultant, uh, to, to advise them on it. FEMA has reviewed it and issued their CLOMAR, and as part of that, they even asked Anarundel County to weigh in to make sure they were okay, and they gave what's called a concurrence letter. MDE is involved, uh, so there's just, there's reviews up and down the chain. And that's, we're not complaining. We know that's what we had to do and what we were in for, and we're doing it, and we'll continue to work closely with your staff every step of the way on that. I think we're creating a, a better recreation facility in, in terms of the overall use of that property with the trail network, uh, but that's a subjective thing. I'm not going to convince somebody who thinks otherwise, but I'm not a golfer, so I always feel like the golf courses aren't for me. And so frankly, having a trail network with, with a, um, open space, uh, reforested area around there, I think is a better opportunity for more people, uh, at least those folks who don't play golf. Again, I want to say, uh, on the fill question, we are filling to raise the property out of the floodplain, and as the discussion went, I don't have the USGS maps that he was referring to, but we are bringing up to the level of the existing neighborhood, and so if he was saying those were out of the, the Agnes level, then we will be at that level. So, um, but we are not grading in a way that we can reverse the flow of water. We have to actually verify that we're picking up all the water that comes into our property and that we're managing it in a way that's efficient in accordance with regulation. We are planting trees. We are also allowing regeneration of, of, um, open space, which actually happens very quickly once property is cleared and let to regenerate. I'm just checking notes, and if I miss anything, you let me know. Uh, I do want to emphasize again that the, both the stormwater management and the revisions to the floodplain were reviewed by Prince George's County to ensure there's no adverse impact on other areas, flood zone or otherwise, downstream from this property. We believe that this is a thoughtful exercise of bringing together a proposal that maximizes the preservation of open space, provides a development envelope that's consistent with the PUD and a neo-traditional and single-family character, lots of clustering, uh, which frankly minimizes the amount of impervious surface by clustering your development in one area. And I want to point out that the, the review here for, for a final site plan is not a question of whether or not the property should be built, it's how it should be built. And we feel that we've put together a plan that responds to your ordinance, but it's also very creative and creates a nice community. We look forward to working with the city, and we're going to be in the community for a long time, and I suppose we will have more community meetings as we go forward. We look forward to working with you. We hope to get your support tonight, and we support the staff in all of their conditions and accept their staff report.
Thank you. Any final questions for the applicant? Any questions for staff? Okay, I will entertain a motion on Agenda Item 8 first.
Madam Chair, I will move to approve the final site and landscape application and resolution number 1806 PC for 14415 Greenview Drive, as filed by the applicant.
Ms. Quillen?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion, if there are no further questions, on the forest conservation plan, Agenda Item 9.
I will move to approve the forest conservation application and resolution number 1804-PC 14415 Greenview Drive, as filed by the applicant.
I second.
Ms. Quillen, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone that came out tonight, uh, to the residents and all. Please stay involved, and the meeting is adjourned.